Good evening. We have called this meeting to order, and if we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection.
Okay, our first item of business is adoption of the agenda.
Any additions? Right, seeing none.
Our next item is 3.1, which is the minutes of the June 5th, 2018 Regular Medicine Hat City Council Meeting, page 5 of your packet.
Any errors, omissions? Seeing none.
Okay, and under Presentations, item 4.1, we have the Land and Business Support 2017 Annual Report, and our presenter is Grant McKay, Manager of Land and Business Support. This is part of your Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting of June 6, which is item 6.2.
Welcome, Mr. McKay, you have the floor. Oh, sorry, maybe your mic isn't on, or...
Are you live now? It sounds like it. All right, once again, thank you very much, members of City Council, for the opportunity to present the 2017 Land and Business Support Annual Report. While the requirement for this report arises out of the 2014 land and properties business model and some policy requirements for exception reporting, it also provides us an opportunity to talk a little bit about the scope of services our department provides. We certainly are much more than just a land development and sales entity. District's report follows a very similar format and content to what was presented last year. I've added a few photos to try and show what it is that we do, and a few testimonials to hopefully explain how we do it. The reporting in your agenda package is exactly the same as the report I'll be sharing with you on screen, so with that and the fact that you can refer to materials, I will do my best to try and move along as expediently as possible, and certainly happy to oblige any questions you may have at the end. The report is divided into four main sections. One is a bit of an introductory overview section where we talk a little bit about our personnel and financial resources, and then we devote a section to each of the three So that said, we'll start off with who we are. We are a very small team of six people responsible for, among other things, managing capital budgets that currently total $142 million. We are responsible generating sales revenues in the $6-10 million range as measured by the last three years. We also manage 6,700 acres of land under our jurisdiction, and we manage multiple contractors to help achieve the council's objectives. Due to the seniority of the current staff, we are sort of at that verge of retirements. We are likely to, within the next four-year business planning cycle, lose well over 100 years of direct experience with the City Medicine Act in that department. So as you can appreciate, succession planning is going to be a huge factor for us in the next few years. Do I need to point this somewhere to be more responsive?
Tor, Sharon.
All right, okay. So the consolidated financials on screen before you have previously been shared through the year-end variance report as well as the financial statements, so I won't dwell upon them here, but I will draw your attention to one factor, and that is the 2017 sales revenues and net earnings turned out to be a little better than expected in the budget, and that was mostly due to two larger sales, one being the commercial site on Strachan Road to the Canalta organization, as well as the cluster housing site in behind Walmart. Net earnings were almost $1 million ahead of budget in 2017, and a full $653,000 greater than 2016 actual. As a reminder of the community benefit achieved through land and property functions over the years, this slide shows the contributions to community capital and/or projects over the last 20 years, in other words, our dividends, and they cover three distinct dividend periods. Although highly variable year-to-year, what you can see there is $43 million has been contributed over that period, or an average of $2.2 million per year from land and properties functions. And although the graph shows $0 for the dividend in 2017, the actual calculation by policy was 6.2. The reason that that $6.2 million was not paid out in 2017 is because we needed to clean up a working capital deficit position that lingered from 2014. So we've now addressed that, and we're now sort of back in the black, so to speak, and moving forward, our dividends should be turned normal. The actual policy that drives that will be updated in 2017 to make sure that we never dip below into a negative working capital position again. So moving on to our first main functional area of subdivision development and sales. The first couple of slides plot our sales profile shown by the green line against our inventory levels shown by the blue bars, and inventory additions showed by the red bars. This first slide focuses on residential. 2017 saw us move 37 residential properties, and by the end of the year, we concluded with 236 lots in our inventory. The minor bit of red showing on top of the 2017 bar relates to a plan initiated back in 2014 to convert seven duplex lots into 13 single-family homes. So in other words, there were no new subdivisions opened up in 2017. When viewed as a five-year average, you'll note that our inventory levels are running at approximately four to five times our sales profile. So that's well above our target of 2.0. So for that reason, in 2016, 17, and again in 18, we are not planning to add more inventory or open up any new subdivisions. Next slide focuses on commercial, and as you can see from the 2017 bar, we sold one lot, and that was, of course, the Canalta lot I told you about. Because it was for half of the Strachan Road site, the remnant parcel effectively became a lot addition. Fortunately, that remnant parcel has already been sold in 2018 to Canalta, so now that entire 17-acre parcel on Strachan Road has been sold, and we've received over $6 million in sales revenue from that lot alone. What that leaves us with in 2018 then is likely two remaining lots, one in ranch lands and neighborhood commercial, and one in southlands, also a neighborhood commercial. There are currently no serviced industrial lots within Labs or Land and Business Support jurisdiction, and that is something that I'll talk a little bit about when we get to the anticipated land development page. What this chart shows you is the makeup of our current residential inventory and where it sits. Of the 236 lots remaining at the end of the year, you can see the breakdowns between single-family and other classes on the left, and for sure, the lion's share is single-family lots, as well as our geographic distribution of those lots amongst our four active subdivisions. And certainly, the lion's share of lots sits south of the river, primarily in southlands and Samus Heights. This slide simply shows where the sales have actually occurred over the last five years between those four areas, and of course, to no surprise, southlands bears the lion's share of sales. One bit of, I guess, good news is that Samus Site 7 is beginning to pick up with a few extra sales in 17, and certainly some more interest in 2018 here. The next couple of slides were developed last year and specifically aimed at trying to depict the percentage of the residential market share that the City Medicine Hat holds. And it was developed in conjunction with some comments that we had received through the development industry and the Chamber of Commerce about the involvement of our department in the residential land development business. And of course, council has previously committed to trying to occupy about 50% of market share, so both of these slides are aimed at addressing that. And what you'll see on this first slide is focused on the sales side of market share. So what we do here is developments permits, or development permits issued on both private and public sector lots, as a bit of a lagging indicator of market share. And what you see that, depending on the frame of reference within the last eight years, you see us tracking around that 50% mark. In fact, it's as low as 46% if you look at the last three-year period. If we turn the focus to the inventory side of the picture and looking at lots brought to market between the city and private, what you'll note there is that, from an inventory perspective, we see the city has brought a little bit better than half of the total residential lots since 2013, 219 of 388, to be precise. Sort of two points of note on this slide is that, in the last two years, there has been very little development occurring, public or private, and that's simply because of the rate of absorption out there. There are, we're both oversupplied, private and public sector, and the fact is, there's no lots being brought on because there's just too much inventory sitting idle right now. One of the things to take note of, and I did mention this last year during my presentation, is that as the supply of privately-held land in the city, and we do have only a select couple of private developers left in the game, as that lot, land becomes to be sold and sold out, unless the private sector moves to acquire more land within the city jurisdiction and develops that land, the city's market share has nowhere to go but up, so that is something to pay attention to. We need the private sector certainly to step in here and fill some of that void going into the future. Looking at it from a development perspective and focusing on our anticipated subdivision development over the next few years, the slide before you focuses on residential development on the top half of the slide, and then our commercial industrial on the bottom half of that slide. And of course, with the slow inventory turnover I've already talked about, our recent residential focus has been on sort of the get-ready phases of planning and design rather than actual construction. So you can see in ranch lands 3C, where we have about 160 lots to bring to market in the future, where we're at right now is we've almost got our engineering design fully complete. Once that's submitted and approved by the planning authority, we will be ready to go to tender at a moment's notice, but again, we'll hold off on that until our inventory is a little bit more absorbed. In Briar Run, we've got an area structure plan under development right now, and that should be submitted to planning for approval this summer, and it's going to include both some residential and commercial and light industrial components. There will likely be about 200 to 300 lots in that subdivision. River Walk, which is a fairly large subdivision out in the peninsula, sort of north of Police Point Park there, and to the east of ranch lands, there's probably close to 800 lots in that subdivision, but again, because of our current inventory levels and the absorption rate, that's likely sometime off into the future. Where we focused over the last little bit here, of course, is on the commercial side. So at the airport, especially on the north node, that's where we've currently got some current design and build activity happening, and we're looking forward to bringing our first six or seven acres to market either later this summer or more likely next spring, and supplementing what's out there. One of the issues that we're having to face out there is the water servicing. As council may recall from last year, part of the intent of that subdivision development is to reuse as many of the, as much of the infrastructure that's in the ground right now as opposed to creating new, and one of the issues we're having is meeting fire floor requirements for commercial development, so that's something that we're having to work through with our engineering consultants. One of the other things that we're also working on, of course, and this is sort of was initiated when Aurora Cannabis came to town and we're looking for industrial land, is we've mobilized a sort of a preliminary servicing plan for the northwest, north of Broadway Avenue, and to the west of Box Springs Load, Road, just north of the existing Box Springs Business Park. The plan is to have that concept and an idea of cost before council in the not-too-distant future, hopefully in the next month or two, so the council's better able to evaluate the feasibility of developing industrial lands to the north against your current economic development priorities. And this is just a sort of a map presentation of where those subdivision developments are Another slide that's sort of been developed to focus purely on the business unit aspect of our department, that is, that being the subdivision development and sales, is a statement of earnings and loss for just that unit. So here, we factored out our property management function and our business support office and sort of removed the administrative costs from this, and focused strictly on that which applies to our subdivision development and sales. And what you see here is, similar to the overall picture, our net earnings have improved over 2017 budget and 16 actuals, and the graphic on the screen also shows, in the text box to the right, our calculations for annual returns on investment as well as our gross margin. As per the business model that's been approved, we strive to return a 15% rate of return on the unadjusted cost of lots sold, and on that basis, the 2017 figure was 24%. Some other highlights to focus on here from that area is, so we've undertaken a number of activities over the last few years to, again, try to address the development industry concerns and some of the commentary brought to us by the Chamber of Commerce. In particular, one of the things that we heard was trying to be a bit more responsive to the development industry and developers and builders. So one of our focuses has been to work directly with some of our home builders, basically our customers, and try to help them, or try to understand from them what it's going to take for them to be successful in what has really been a down market over the last few years. And one of the things that we heard back from them was allowing them the ability to purchase a group or a block of lots at a time, but staggering their closing date so that they can better manage their cash flows, but yet hold a portfolio of lots that they can then turn around and market to their clientele. So as a result of that, we've come up with a sort of a group or block lot sales arrangement with one builder in 2017, that was Lacy Homes, and subsequently, two others in the early parts of 2018. So I think this is a strategy that we'll probably look to continue as we move forward into future years. Another thing that we're heavily involved with, of course, is what I like to call "one of" sales. So in the case of serving the organization, everybody around this table will remember that we closed on the sale of Fire Hall Number 2 last year. We also were heavily involved in the plan to dispose of the Medicine Hat Arena, and we'll be having some budget amendment for council's approval to come forward on the demolition of that particular property here in the not-too-distant future. As mentioned earlier, we have a policy obligation to report all sales transactions not directly approved by council, so you can see on the screen in front of you the three specific items that the CAO approved as per policy in 2017. All right, changing our focus to the property management and the internal real estate consulting role that we have in our department. These are roles that exist not because the land department is involved in subdivision development and sales, but more so because the organization and the departments within that organization have needs for whether it's development of projects or disposal of surplus assets. So our workload is really driven from the rest of the organization in this function. As part of this function, we, as I mentioned earlier, we supervise or we manage about 6,700 acres worth of land. You can see there that that land on the chart on the right in particular is currently used for a number of different land uses. The largest portion right now is currently irrigated cropland and grazing leases, as shown by the red and green wedges of the pie. And just to show you or remind you where those lands sit, this graphic tells you two things. One is the green areas are the areas that we currently have under administration and are under a lease of one form or another, primarily, again, agricultural grazing, and the blue parcels are those that are not under lease, and they're typically lands that either are being reserved for future environmental reserve areas, or they are infill sites that are being actively brought to market by our department over the next few years to try and move those into the private marketplace. This slide mentions major activities undertaken in 2017 as part of our property management portfolio. So again, just as a reminder, we do manage three downtown surface parking lots. We also handle all of the summer and winter maintenance activities, including everything from snow clearance to grass and weed cutting, to garbage removal when there is illegal dumping on our lands. We also work in conjunction with the legal department and our health, safety, and environment department to, on behalf of other departments, deal with property acquisitions, whether it be for building a berm, or a roadway, or road allowance, or whatever, or leasing of a building, or in some cases, actually closing roads. One of the big resource-intensive items from 2017 was dealing with 210 South Railway, so council will remember, earlier this year, we brought forward a decision item that saw your approval towards contributing to acquiring that building in conjunction with the Orphan Well. That building will be brought down this summer over the months of July and August, and then the Orphan Well Association will move in late August to remediate the leaking gas leak at that site. Again, as per policy requirements, council has provided with an annual report setting out any new leases and or license entered into in the past year. As you can see from the list, most of those activities relate to rather small month-to-month items like laydown, construction laydown areas, or portable billboards, and typically ranging from a few hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars per month. And moving into our last major area is our business support office. So the graphic in front of you shows a picture of one of the downtown properties to benefit from the current DDI program or the Downtown Investment Program under administration, and the testimony at the bottom of that page hopefully reflects the kind of impression that we strive to foster with all of the developers, investors that we deal with on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis. So thanks in large part to the efforts of our business support officer. I'm really pleased with the evolution of that particular branch of our service. I believe we're making a concerted effort to move from more of a reactionary information providing sort of contract administration group to one that's more focused on trying to be proactive, initiating, facilitating, and implementing a broader range of economic development services, focused on relationship building, linking broad strategy to tactical execution, and influencing around best practices. This first slide gives a summary of the areas of focus in 2017 related to our Development Investment Readiness Team, or DIRTT, as the affection acronym has now been labeled. And also noted here are the 19 different investors of the that function supported and served in 2017, ranging from industries from petrochemical manufacturing, to agricultural, to renewable energy, to technology. Of course, a key part of the business support office's responsibility continues to be with overseeing and supporting our economic development and tourism contractors, plus serving as a liaison to our city-centered development agency. The results reflected on this slide have already been provided to council through previous reports by Invest Medicine Hat and DMO, so I'm not going to go into them in detail here, but they are captured for your reference. In terms of other activity, efforts are ongoing to build relationships with other partner economic development agencies within the community. A good example of that in 2017 was around the development of a Southeast Alberta Renewable Energy Strategy, which was intended to provide a framework for fostering further development and innovation for the renewable energy cluster in Southeast Alberta. Other examples moving forward will include the development of a business retention and expansion and a labor strategy over the course of 2018, as well as the development of an updated, industry-driven, and new economic strategy for the years of 2019 and 20, as contained within council's strategic plan. Also, and last but not least, the BSO does continue to administer the Downtown Development Center Program, which, as highlighted by these two slides, shows that total grants approved by the program, or this slide shows total grants approved by program or by year. You can see that on the left, by far and away, the two most popular programs continue to be the Architectural and Visual Enhancement Program, as well as the Commercial Development. And after you, we've served 43 more properties in 2017. We now have a total of 192 grants issued since the program began in 2011. Over that same period of time, a grand total of 125 properties have received those 192 grants, and $2.5 million through the end of 2017 have been applied into the downtown core. In the past, we've talked a little bit about what's the leveraging effect of the public dollars being put into downtown to this program. We've talked about a range of anywhere from, you know, three times that in terms of private sector investment, all the way up to 10 times. So one of the things that we've done this year is just we've gone back to the assessment department to take a snapshot comparing 2011 assessments in that downtown area versus 2018, and what we've learned is that the assessment growth over that seven-year period has been about 16% for your information. And really, that then concludes my presentation. I thank you for your attention, and certainly I'm happy to try and address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Any questions, comments? Counselor Dumanowski?
Thank you, Mr. McKay, for your presentation. I had the privilege of seeing it at committee level, but I always learn a lot when I see it once again, and I hope the public had the same opportunity, and I'm sure they did. Maybe a couple of comments and maybe a question at the end. Just a reminder to everyone, obviously, in the public who looks at this report and maybe hears, or the number of residential lots that were developed or purchased resonates out of the report, maybe not in the most positive way because they weren't significant. This is the Land and Business Support Office. I think you outlined very well the different roles that your department plays in sales, property management, business support, et cetera, and so it is multifaceted. It is a small division, but a very integral part of our organization and our history. We're pleased to see that we're on the right side of the revenue-to-expense side, making some corrections, as you added, for previous years where we weren't. Some of the things that definitely resonate for me are that we are shaping and evolving and looking within to mimic the market more closely. Now, some of that was born out of just a business case to align ourselves with private sector, but some of it had to do with historical criticism from other organizations who felt we had, we didn't have the same metrics when we were looking at ourselves. So we've clearly aligned ourselves to that. I like the fact that we're responding with the market share component that you outlined in that 50% range. We were a little bit higher this last year, but typically, we're in that 50% range. I remember when it used to be a lot higher than that, and we used to feel a lot of criticism. So we are, and it's a healthy number that allows both private developers and us to work hand-in-hand to develop this community. The response to an ever-changing climate, as you said, we're not going to bring on lots just because we're in the business and there's this artificial expectation to do so. Some of us, of course, recall the years where we were, we couldn't turn enough lots. It was wild times to even think back to that, but times shift, and they will again, and we'll respond accordingly. You talked about block sales. I remember, I mean, we used to do the odd block sale in the past for different reasons, but not to the extent, not with a, to the invitation of private developers who are responding favorably to that. So it's definitely, it's not a change necessarily in this report, but it's a historical one that you're taking forward mandate. And pricing adjustments. I mean, that is something that is, we spoke in a committee about that before, but responding to a climate that requires us to look back. We could, as a landholder, sit back and cross our arms and just say, "No, we'll wait it out," or artificially change the pricing in our, for our lots, and challenge the private sector. So we're always looking at all those different indices and kind of, you know, managing them accordingly. So we've made some price reductions where we needed to, in some cases significantly, and they were justified, and they reflect the market, which actually helps the private sector. So my comments might be, well, are we, are you celebrating the fact that we're in the land business and we're still doing things well? Yes. Are we, am I celebrating, are my comments celebrating the fact that we can cohabitate with the private sector in a very mutually beneficial way to the residents' current and future in Medicine Hat? Yes, we are. And so I want to thank your department, I want to thank all of you for working really hard and for being, for a very small department, very flexible, very nimble in all the different tasks that you do, and there are times where one will take up your task in time much more fervently than others, and there will be times where they'll shift again, and always looking at best practice, always looking at what's around the corner, and it's a very different and very contemporary view of how we play in this same field as everyone else. So I want to thank you for that and congratulate you on that. My question might be then, if it's fair to ask, what's the next thing? What are we hearing from the private developer and/or chamber and others? They've been quite quiet lately, I better touch wood here, but around what, where we need to go next? What's the next tweak? What's the next alignment, if we will, if you will, sorry, to make, that they wish we could move toward? Is there any of that kind of commentary coming out in the public?
Through the chair, or Counselor Dumanowski. It may be a bit premature for me to answer that. We do have our stakeholder meeting coming up next Thursday, so I'll hope to hear a little more of that at that time.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch.
With your worship, Grant, I want to thank you for your presentation today. It's always great to get an understanding from our business segments of how we're doing individually. Question I have is, two questions, actually. One is in regards to benchmarking. So when you make your report, for example, in review of the year's services to, say, Moretta's, the CAO, or how the case may be, how do we determine success for this business unit, and what's the benchmark that you use? I know it might be subjective, I get it, but I think it's important for the taxpayer and members of council, quite frankly, to say, you know, year-over-year, it's been successful, it hasn't been successful, and I know it's all subjective, so I'll leave you at that. And then the second question, actually, I'll get you to answer that question first before I, I don't want to confuse you with them. So again, the benchmarking, because in my world, if I said I made 10% return this year, relative to what? So if the market, if the index set did 20%, and I only did 10, it's poor. If the market did 5, and I did 10, I'm a premium. So just your thoughts on that?
Thank you for the question, through the chair, to Counselor Hirsch. That's an excellent question, and one of the And one of the things that sort of I've been faced with, as I've been here twenty-two months now in this particular role, is that the report before you and the quality of the measures that we're bringing forward are really based upon the information that we have at our disposal to share with you. So one of the things that we are doing is we reference that 2014 land and properties business model, which contains measures such as market share and unadjusted cost, or the rate of return on just a lot sold, and whether we're sort of meeting some of the more qualitative social and economic development kinds of goals. And so we sort of track ourselves from year to year to try and answer that question. One of the things that we have had some conversation about with the private industry is, like, do we benchmark ourselves against them? And the reality is, our cost structure is quite a bit different. I mean, there are costs that we may not bear that they do. There are also costs that we do bear that I guarantee you they do not bear. So it's very difficult to find an apples-to-apples comparison. And really, the concerns that private industry have brought to us before is just, are we as a city undercutting them in their efforts? And so since we moved to the market value appraisal system of setting our prices, we've alleviated that concern. And then the other part of that is that, you know, whatever flows out of our bottom line comes back to the community in the form of a dividend. So there is no, there is no holding tank or no sort of profit sharing with somebody else, it's all coming back to the community. So I would say, you know, the dividends that we're returning back are an indicator of success as well. But it's really the being able to track ourselves against ourselves sort of year after year and looking for additional metrics that help us determine whether, in fact, we are doing better, the same, or worse than previous years.
No, and I appreciate that, so thanks for that clarification. So the question I, the second question I had was, do you ever envision a conclusion of the DDIP? I'm very proud of the fact that I was kind of an architect back ten years ago when our ad hoc group created for the city centre development, and part of it was that development. Great to see the initiative take a flower, and it absolutely looks fantastic downtown. I work downtown, so I see it every day and the evolution of it. But now thoughts can turn to, is that mission complete? And the whole idea at the start was to actually create a domino effect, a demonstration site, if you will, where the city Medicine Hat creates a scenario for success. So I think it has been successful. So now the question, because that is an annual allocation of dollars that is subscribed to by individuals. But I guess now it's to the point where market forces be in where it's at, where the city is, the downtown's been doing quite well. I guess that's my question, or maybe it's a question for council to determine come budget time, whether or not this is something. Because ultimately, you could have an argument that other areas of the town now, as a result, could use some beneficial assistance as well, and maybe that's, and this is a great point in time to be at, in terms of the evolution of the DDIP. But I'm just looking for your thoughts on that regard.
Once again, through the chair, to councillor Hirsch. I mean, again, a great question. I think it really does depend on what council sets its priorities and where they want to see their development dollars going. I mean, I can tell you that, you know, the programme to date through the end of 2017 has been fully subscribed. We've exhausted the dollars every year, and, you know, you've seen one hundred and twenty-five properties benefit from that. Now, of course, the downtown is a finite geographical area, and at some point in time, your returns are going to diminish over time, right? Maybe we're at that point now. I can tell you that in 2018, the current programme is only about half subscribed, or slightly better than half, and we're almost halfway through the year. So normally, we'd see it ninety to ninety-five percent subscribed by this time. So there may be a time or a point in time coming where council wants to focus its development dollars elsewhere. Whether it's now or not, I think that really is a council decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turnbull.
Thank you. Grant, thanks very much for your report, and I know you haven't been in the job too long, and so the comments I'm going to make are not directed at you directly, nor to Commissioner Schwarzenberger, because I respect both of you on the job that you do. However, from my point of view, when we talk about return on investment, as we sat down together, the three of us, the city owns one hundred and fifty million dollars at today's prices in land, and we are getting one point one eight million dollars in net profit, which is less than one percent. That's a hard pill for me personally to swallow. Now, I know that we didn't get into this mess easily. We have, in fact, six years of lots, based on, even at forty sales per year, in our inventory. And so for me, I don't worry about the developers, because what they'd really like us to see is have hardly any lots, because that would make their lots far more expensive, and they're in the business to make money. But since we've asked our citizens, who threw their taxes and are borrowing, if we borrowed, or however we paid for the land in the first place, is that they expect, and should expect, that we'd get a fair return on the total investment we have. Now, I know it's not, it's easy for me to say that and say, well, Phil Turnbull, what is your plan? Well, I'm not in the development business, so I can't give you a plan. All I know is what I expect as a shareholder. So I like your ideas of the infill. I think the more properties we can sell that are in developed areas, the city has no infrastructure costs, no parks, no schools, and so it becomes far more profitable, and of course, it adds to our tax base. And so one of the things that you brought up, and I thought was quite interesting, is that our share is going to go up, and I think that's okay. Because if their share goes down and our share goes up, we sell more property. Because until we get our inventory back down into line, we will struggle. We will struggle, in my opinion, we will struggle, based on all the reports of the number of years that we've been in the business. So I know you folks are working hard at it, and you're coming with some really good ideas, and I really like the idea that we take a hard look at having developed areas for, what's the word I'm looking for? Come on. For light industrial, sorry, or heavy industrial areas. I think one of the statements that was made right here by Invest Medicine Hat was the number-one complaint that they received, whether everybody accepts that or not, was that there isn't enough land ready to go. So I think it's important for us to develop that so that we can continue to grow our city. If we grow our city, so will our land and properties grow as a result of that, because they'll be neat for more sales for houses and apartments and whatever. So I say that with all respect. I know that you're doing a good job at coming up with some great ideas, and so, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may, just make one comment to councillor Turnbull. Put my economist hat on. Undeveloped land is not capital. You don't expect a capital return as you would on land that you've put capital into and developed. So to take the value of our undeveloped land base and expect a rate of return on it is not realistic. Once we put money into it, we put capital into it, then we expect a return on that capital that we put into the undeveloped land and the new land value that that's attributed. But it's, we sit on a historically derived massive undeveloped land base, and to have an expectation that we're going to get a return as if it is a capital asset over time is just not realistic.
Well, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth, you said, I said. However, I will take exception to that, because as a private developer, when they buy that land, they expect a return of the money that they put up. Mostly, it's borrowed money, because they don't go in there with cash money. So they are forced to make sure that they develop that land and get sales and keep their cash flow. So I get it, we got a lot of land that we can't just develop overnight, and I don't know who made those decisions. I'm not criticizing anybody here who made those decisions. It happens to be there. I'm just saying is, I think our citizens, just like Genco and just like NGPR, this is a business unit, and I would just like to see us, as councillor Hirsch said, is, what are developers getting on a return on their investment compared to us? And I can tell you that no one would invest one hundred and fifty million dollars to get a million dollars back. It just, that's my economic hat.
We can discuss that further later. Councillor Varga?
Thank you, Grant, for your detailed plan here. A lot of the people in my day job I talk to, and they're always wondering about these kinds of things, where the city's moving forward, where the private developers moving forward. It's great to see the information and what's actually happening, so we can go back to them, or I can go back to them and tell them this is what's going on, this is what's happening. So I love the update. But the one question I do have is, is there a trigger mechanism that you have? I see the plan as to when the design, the plan, the design, and then the build is. But if we run out of certain types of size lots, or a different kind of lot, or something that we don't have anymore, is there a trigger system that you have that maybe we can bring more on board within a shorter period of time than what you actually have in your design plan and your planning stage? If we do run out of certain size lots, then maybe nobody wants to have the smaller ones? I'm just wondering if that's in your plans as you go through things.
Through the chair, to councillor Varga. So the direct answer, I think, to your question is, no, we don't have a specific trigger geared around size of lots or types of lots. And it's really sort of, the trigger point is the overall inventory relative to your sales projections. And I mean, certainly, there has in the past, like, long before I got into this role, where the land department could not service lots fast enough to keep up with the demand. So 2006, 2007, 2008, those periods, I mean, you'd bring three hundred lots to market, four hundred would go, right? So there was a lot of angst in those days. I mean, now we're sort of at the end of the spectrum where we've got a fair bit of inventory out there relative to the sales, and the sales are continuing to lag, and, you know, you know, based upon feedback you're getting from your builders, that if you had a few more larger lots and more view lots, they could probably, you know, move those lots on your behalf. But the reality is, is you tend to develop a subdivision with a mix of lots, particularly as a public developer. One of our goals is to make sure that we're serving the entire market as opposed to one niche or another. So even in an area like ranchlands, where, I mean, there's going to be some beautiful view lots out there with some larger opportunities for developers to come in and, you know, build some larger-scale homes, there will also be a mix of smaller-sized family homes as well. So really, it's just a matter of looking at the inventory levels, keeping a pulse on that, and then, you know, bringing forward a recommendation to advance, once we think the timing is right and, you know, we think the sales will eventually, or not too in the distant future, eat up those inventories that we're bringing forward.
Some supplementary, my second question is, I guess as our plan changes, we see what's happening around here and the number of jobs that are going to come to our community, and what the reality is out there with the developers, and where they're going to go with it, because it seems like it's unsure right now as to, are we going to build some more homes? Are we going to build some more multi-unit places for the amount of people that are coming into town? Do we have enough places to look after all these people that might be coming into town to move here and get some of these jobs that are happening with, say, Hut Eight and Aurora? And I wonder if your planning's changed a little bit on that part to maybe think outside the box, and hopefully, we can push those lots forward to get the developers to build on it.
Again, through the chair, to councillor Varga. Again, I'm not so sure it's a change in plan, but one of the things I can report, again, based on feedback we're getting from some of the builders, is that, you know, the market, while it's rather softer now, is apparently evolving. So there is more demand for multifamily and sort of housing units that are at a lower price points, which tend to mean townhouses and things of that nature. So we've actually got a meeting with a builder here this Thursday on a townhouse lot that the city has sat on for probably ten, twelve years. So that's good news. We're starting to see maybe some inventory that has been stagnant for a very long time generating some interest. So that's where I think we can maybe take advantage of some of the incoming economic development, is look at some of those opportunities. And then for certain, if we see demand ticking up and our builders saying, hey, we don't have enough lots, then, I mean, we're ready to go in ranchlands and we could be ready to go in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Councillor Friesen?
I'll bet you didn't think there'd be this much back-and-forth communication, did you, Grant? I enjoyed this report as well. Thank you very much for it. I think it's one of the best ones we've had. It's really, it really gives a true big picture. I just had a couple of comments, a couple of things stand out for me, because I've been here and been through some of these discussions. And when I think of a couple of them, one was some years ago, really, we were really criticized for having so much of the residential land, and what about the developers? And we just held on to everything, and, you know, the criticisms went on and on. And yet now, and so we really listened to that, and we committed to about a fifty percent market share, where others would, developers would have the opportunity. And here we are in a position where it looks like we, other developers may not even take us up on that, and we might end up having more than that fifty percent share, only because the uptake isn't there. So that was, I found that quite interesting. The other thing that I found interesting was that over the years, for quite a few years, we've been very criticized by, about having heavy bureaucracy, red tape, long timelines, on and on it went. And I don't take away from those concerns. What I wanted to comment on was, and you didn't talk about them, was some of the quotes that you had here, which shows to me the difference that your department has made. The Chamber, you know, talked about their focus with us, and in our meetings, they felt their recommendations were heard, and there's progress. Really encouraging to see our city's new motto, open for business, and land and business support is a great example of that. As a result of a recent lease extension, I found members of the Land and Business Support Department respectful, knowledgeable, and professional as we worked our way through the negotiations. And then the one from Hut Eight, from initial contact to final approvals, their pleasure with working with the professionalism in your department. I really see that as, and I think I wanted to point it out, because it's quite a departure from those criticisms we used to hear, which means to me that you listened, and you made some changes, and you developed stronger relationships, which now have led to a far better, just overall experience, which will be nothing but positive for us. So I commend you for that. I wanted to ask, I was going to ask what councillor Varga did about the lots. I'm excited about the new developments we've got coming, and I think that's going to show in an uptake in residential lot development and housing overall. But when I looked at your report, I see we've got two hundred and thirty-six lots available, so I'm not as concerned as if we'd only had a hundred or whatever. I wanted to ask you more about the Business Support Office, and I've often asked this question, but I'd like to get your opinion. How do you see the, when we're talking about business support overall, and you've cited a number of very critical examples here, how do you see the balance between making sure Medicine Hat is taken care of and our role in the region and the region with us? So that we have a strong balance that really brings a value and benefit to all?
Through the chair, to councillor Friesen. I think if Sandra Blyth was here, she'd tell you that, you know, economic development and business development and opportunities don't stop at a geographic border, so the edge of Medicine Hat doesn't necessarily connote where, you know, business is an opportunity. So I think in a lot of cases, what's good for the region is good for the city and vice versa. So certainly, you know, we definitely have to continue to pursue our own interests as a city, but we also have to think a little bit more regionally and globally than that, because business is.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Turnbull?
Thank you. So fellow councillors, and Mr. Mayor, and everybody here in attendance, and those watching television, and I think I wanted to just say that I have enough respect for our CEO, and I think she has for me, that we can actually have this debate in public, and we can agree to disagree on certain items. And she tells me lots of times, Phil, you're out to lunch, and I'll say, okay. And sometimes I'll say the same thing to her. So please don't take this as this was a personal dispute, it was not. This is just a debate on two different points of view.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this presentation? Okay, if we could get a motion for reception?
So moved.
All right. If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is item 4.2, the Financially Fit for the Future 2019 to 2022 Key Budget Assumptions and Targets. And our presenter is Brian Mistel, Commissioner of Corporate Services. And this is part of the Administrative Committee Meeting of June 13th, or item 6.6, page 173.
Go to the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, members of council. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the Financially Fit for the Future Plan and seek council's adoption of the 2019 to 2022 budget assumptions. And one of the key components of this plan, the municipal consent and access fee. The Financially Fit for the Future Plan is designed to be flexible and adaptable while allowing for clear and transparent communication to you, the governing body, and to the community at large, with a desire to provide stable and predictable changes in taxes and fees. This community grapples with a sizable but not insurmountable financial challenge. We started with a $23 million annual shortfall in the municipal budget, and have taken big steps forward over the past two years to reduce it to $16 million. I think it's worth repeating, due to some potential confusion in the community, that this is an annual shortfall. We are fortunate to be seeing higher earnings prospects from electric generation for the next couple of years. next couple of years, in front of a market design change to a capacity market. That is fantastic news, because it provides flexibility, but I don't view it as the solution. Changes required in the plan being outlined this evening allows the city to continue to move forward in a methodical and measured way, demonstrating fiscal responsibility. This council's top priority. Within the fiscal responsibility priority, there are four key results, as outlined by council, that are guiding our direction for the next four years. I'll just walk through them quickly. Uh, the first one is to reduce the city's reliance on the annual energy dividend by a further twelve million dollars. That would drop it from sixteen down to four million per year. Second one is to sta- establish and review service level standards for core municipal services, to look at more efficient and effective, and alternative models for delivery of internal and external city services, and review the reliance of partner agencies and organizations on city funding. The guiding principles are the same that they were when we established this, uh, financial framework, but I think it's worth, uh, retouching on them, because they are the underpinning principles for the recommendations inside. The first one is eliminating the municipal services reliance on volatile commodity revenues, and we've defined those to be related to our natural gas and petroleum resources, so natural gas and oil production, and our electric generation commodities. To establish the Heritage Reserve, which was already passed by council, and, and set up, and has been funded by a s- uh, seed amount of one million dollars from the Community Capital Reserve, and had its first, uh, small dividend from electric generation in two thousand and seventeen. To seek enhanced investment returns from longer-term treasury holdings, and, uh, we've saw, uh, revision to the investment policy as approved by council, and, uh, an update to, uh, the MGA from the minister, allowing the city to invest in broader asset classes, which allowed us to invest a hundred and thirty-two million dollars with Aimco over the last year. To seek a stable and predictable tax environment, a user-pay principle, market-based pricing for utilities, and continue to invest in the rehabilitation of aging infrastructure. I'll try to give a, a bit of a snapshot of the current financial position, uh, of the, the corporation, uh, give you a broader view of that ten-year financial plan, and then seek, uh, direction and support for the key assumptions in the next four-year budget period. The municipal budget, uh, is comprised of a hundred and twenty million dollars of annual expenditures, and it breaks up, as outlined on the pie chart here. Uh, I think it's, um, similar to what we saw previously, and, and little surprise that emergency services is a significant area of investment annually for municipal services, followed by parks and rec and road, bridge and storm system, and then some of the, the smaller components as outlined there. How we pay for them is a combination of different revenue sources, the largest of which is property taxes, followed by u- uh, user fees, sales of goods, and charges. We get some grants, uh, from other levels of government that are operating in nature, primarily other levels of government support us in capital grants, but we do, uh, receive, uh, about five million dollars annually from operating grants, and then we have some investment earnings on our working capital of about three million dollars. And then the contribution from business units is the sixteen million dollars I referred to earlier, in addition to four million dollars that comes from the distribution companies This is, I recognize a busy slide, but there's a lot of components of, of the Financially Fit levers that are outlined here, and I'll try to, to walk through them and hopefully do it justice in explaining what you're, you're seeing here. It has the full ten-year outlook here, um, and in the box in the middle, it's captured the four years that we're referring to, uh, at this point in time. The first two years, uh, of the Financially Fit plan started with the twenty-three million dollar annual shortfall up in the top left-hand corner, and through a number of adjustments in levers outlined below, was reduced to sixteen point four million annually, which is near the bottom of the page. Uh, at the very bottom, it shows thirty-four point nine million dollars, which was the transfer from the Electric Equipment Reserve to the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve to bridge the funding for the municipal budget for the last two years. Moving into the next four-year period, we start with sixteen point four million dollar shortfall at the, the, the very top of the page, and then show, uh, cost pressures that are against the, the organization. So, an assumption of two percent for wage inflation translates to one point seven million dollars annually. General inflation on materials, contract, services, and the like, be about half a million dollars a year. The senior center, which will be constructed later this year and be fully operational for two thousand and nineteen, will add another one point five million dollars in expenditures into the operating budget. Municipal assist, or sorry, Connell's Center, uh, point three million dollars per year, um, based on current operations. Municipal assist reflects improvements in the development, uh, of, uh, land in the community, but also has a subsidy component of municipal assist related to that development. And so, that's point two million dollars per year, being offset by, uh, a number of levers below. The, the first two relate to property tax adjustments, and similar to what's been, um, followed the last two years, it's been a four percent annual tax rate increase, and that's what's been projected for the next four-year period, with a, a municipal consent and access fee being the next, uh, line, uh, for two million dollars in two thousand and nineteen, and escalating over the four-year period for a total of six point two million dollars per year annually. By the time we get to the end of, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, service level examination would seek to, uh, reduce service levels for a total of one point six million dollars over the course of the four-year period. User fees, seek to, to increase user fees by a total of one million dollars over the four-year period, and cost containment would seek to, to find two million dollars of cost reductions inside the, the municipal services over the four-year period. The, the bottom, very bottom of the page under that, uh, that block shows thirty-five point two million dollars required from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two, and that would be, uh, the amount of reserve funds, again, looking at the Electric Equipment Reserve, required to, to bridge this budget over the four-year period. Updated this slide, which gives us a view of how the, the tax and utility rates in Medicine Hat compare to the peer municipalities, uh, not only in Alberta, but across the country. This survey is done annually and compiled by the City of Calgary, and what you see here is showing where Medicine Hat, uh, currently sits in two thousand and sixteen's comparison, and if the sixteen million dollar gap was adjusted purely through property taxes, it would increase the annual burden of taxes and utility shown here, currently at four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight to four thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, which is, uh, right in the same neighborhood as, um, our peer municipality, Lethbridge. And I think it's, uh, a comparison, comparison from a financial perspective, but it also should be considered in light of the breadth of services that the City of Medicine Hat offers relative to some of these other municipalities who are, um, mostly larger than the city Balance sheet headwinds that we continue to see, and I'll provide a little bit of more context for some of these items. Uh, our debt capacity, we've seen, uh, debt increase over the last few years. There is still debt capacity available on our balance sheet, but we have added debt. Uh, we, as of the end of two thousand and seventeen, we're at three hundred and twenty-one million dollars, uh, of debt. Grant funding, we, uh, continue to assume that grants currently, uh, being provided to the municipality on an annual basis will continue, uh, into the future at a similar level. We have heard indications that the MSI funding approach may change at the provincial level, but I, I continue to assume that it, it will come in similar amount, but maybe in a different fashion. Reserves, we've been drawing out of reserves to bridge the municipal operating budget over the last number of years, and, uh, continue to look at those reserves to, to bridges as we move forward. And then, uh, we also are keeping an eye on our abandonment and reclamation liabilities for the remaining three thousand and some wells that we have, uh, currently, uh, in the field, related to our NGPR business unit. Financial reserve overview, these are the, the major reserves in place, and shows, uh, balance at two thousand and seventeen and the forecast's the end of two thousand and eighteen. As you can see, they, um, are decreasing as time goes on, as I alluded to on the last slide, we are using, uh, reserves to, to bridge our municipal operating budget, and, um, our gas depletion reserve is, is being drawn on to support the, the growth program there, and, uh, this year, we're seeing even, uh, further, uh, challenges in commodity prices, particularly natural gas, somewhat offset by oil prices, but natural gas still contributes the largest portion of our production volumes in that business unit. The debt overview, uh, as you can see, it's increased, uh, over time from two thousand and fourteen at twenty-seven percent of our debt limit. As of the end of two thousand and seventeen, we are at fifty-four percent, and project in two thousand and nineteen, we'll get up to, uh, around sixty-four percent, as we continue to reinvest in infrastructure. Bit of an outlook on capital requirements. This is based on our two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, uh, business planning cycle and the capital projections related there, too. Uh, I've taken out NGPR capital, because they are undertaking a, a, a growth program, and I've also taken out the electric generation capital to, to get a view of, um, the distribution business units and our municipal services. The bulk of capital requests are coming from the, the, uh, distribution utilities. Uh, we have some major plant upgrades in both water and sanitary in the forecast, um, but the, the total five-year average is a hundred and three million dollars per year. Uh, it's, it's higher in some years, lower in others, but averages out to a hundred and three million, uh, keeping our, our balance sheets in similar fashion as it is now, so replace any retired debt with equivalent debt payments. Uh, we see our funding envelope to be about seventy million dollars per year, so we, we have pressure to, to, uh, continue to invest in the capital that, that we see in the forecast to the tune of about thirty million dollars per year. So, that becomes increasingly important if we're looking at funding that with debt. This, uh, slide tries to capture what I went through in the, the much busier, uh, slide earlier on the, each of the levers and the targets, uh, for, for the next four-year periods that would help close the twelve million dollars of that sixteen million dollar gap over the budget period. I want to move on and talk a little bit about the municipal consent and access fee, because that item is before council this evening as well, seeking adoption, uh, of that fee. Uh, want to provide a little bit of background as to what it is and, and how that would look inside our utility bills. So, the, the municipal consent and access fee is levied by the municipality onto the electric and gas distribution utilities. Uh, it's to compensate the municipality for the infrastructure that's located on municipal land. Gives the distribution company the right to provide electricity and gas service in the community, and is paid by the customers in the municipality. The fee is based typically as a percentage of the distribution tariff. Uh, various methodologies have been taken by other municipalities on what percentages they have used. We've outlined that in the briefing note, uh, in the package, as to what, uh, we've scanned other Alberta municipalities and included what they've used for percentage, uh, rates. Applying a percentage rate as scheduled out here, uh, for electric, starting in two thousand and nineteen at seven percent of the distribution tariff, and for gas at seven percent as well, and both escalating over the, the four-year period as outlined here, would, uh, would translate to, uh, the revenue in the top line there, two million dollars in two thousand and nineteen, and six point two million in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and the franchise fee cap for those two utilities outlined below at twenty percent for electric and thirty-five percent for gas, and that's, um, outlined by AUMA, which is in accordance with the, the AUC guidance. Trying to take a view of what that impact would be to a residential customer and comparing it to some, uh, peer municipalities. These are some components in the electric bill that you see now, um, and it's showing the introduction of the municipal consent and access fee over the four-year period for Medicine Hat, but compares to the rates that are in effect in the other municipalities as of January two thousand and eighteen. A similar view related to the gas utility bill. I'll note that even with the, the four-year view into the future, uh, the, the bill overall is still competitive with peer group. Uh, just quickly, just the mechanics, how, um, this would be calculated from the electric bill that our customers receive now. The boxes that are shaded in blue, um, are the two components that the municipal consent and access fee is applied to. The same for the gas bill. So, for implementation, the next steps, uh, seeking a January one implementation date, we would return to council as part of the rate-setting process in, in the, I guess, early winter. So, November, December, a bylaw comes forward to council, setting the utility rates for the following year, and this would be a component inside that, uh, rate bylaw. A recap, uh, this table exists also in the briefing note, uh, included in the package, but just summarizes each of the budget assumptions that we're seeking council's, uh, adoption this evening. And that concludes the presentation.
So, thank you, Mr. Mistel. Um, so, we'll just have, uh, questions, uh, of Mr. Mistel, because these two items do come up later on in, in item, uh, six point six, the six admin committee. So, are there any questions of the presenter? Council Friesen?
Uh, just one, if I could, your worship, and thank you, Brian, that was, um, you explained that in a way that I thought was quite easy to understand, uh, on a very complex issue. I just wanted to ask you about the, um, the service level reduction component, and maybe that's not the only thing, but it's the best example. You're asking us to approve targets, and, um, I wanted to just emphasize that that, at this point in time, is indeed what they were, or if my understanding is incorrect, please tell me. Because, uh, if you look further into the information here, we talk about doing some more, uh, consultation with the public, looking deeper into the possibilities or not, in, within those, uh, areas of service level, level reductions, what would work, what wouldn't, what would be palatable, what wouldn't, uh, what's in the best interest of the people, what isn't, all that kind of stuff. And so, for me right now, this is, is really an adoption of a target, but not, it, it could be a moving, a bit of a moving target. So, I, I just want to make sure that when we say yes to this, we're not absolutely committing to exactly one point six million dollars, if I use that as the example, when we're not really finished fully vetting it yet.
Through the chair, Council Friesen, thanks for the question. Uh, so, the work thus far has been trying to establish some targets, that's a balanced approach inside the, the overall framework and, and addressing all the levers. So, at this point, uh, we, we're looking at one point six million dollars in the service level reduction area. There is definitely more work to be done in that respect, and it will, uh, in- There is definitely more work to be done in that respect and it will include decision by council on any particular area that's to be adjusted. So this gives us direction that the, overall, the financial plan is intact. This is what we want to model and drive for in our budget plans as we develop them and bring them forward later in the year. But there is decisions yet to be made by council and as appropriate, we will conduct community consultation, work with stakeholders, depending on the area that we're looking at and the level of impact that it has. Now, we envision that to occur probably September, so after the summer months, when we would get to that point for broader community input and seeking more solid definitive direction and direction, or sorry, direction from council on particular service level adjustments.
If I could just follow up, I just don't want us to be put in a position down the road where we say, well, we said it was going to be 1.6, maybe it'll be 1.8, maybe it'll be 1.45. I mean, I don't, we don't know that exactly yet. And so I just want to be clear when we say we are approving these targets, that they are indeed targets at this point in time. And I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat, you don't even have to answer. I just want to be clear about that.
Chair, I don't feel like it's a hot seat, I'd be happy to answer. I think overall, council retains the ability to adjust this plan as you see appropriate. So if there's more in that particular lever, you may pull back from another area and vice versa. We, you know, I know transit's a bit of a long history there, but we saw that that was a service level adjustment that when we got down to it, decided we are not going to proceed with that and looked to make a tax adjustment instead. So that shows the flexibility of the plan. So we had a target, we worked towards it, pulled back and decided to do something different.
Okay, any other questions? Can I get a motion for reception?
So moved.
Second.
We could vote. That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing, which is item 5.1, bylaw 4480, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 4168, the land use bylaw. And this is the south Boundary Road area to redesignate to low density and it's on page 13 of your packet.
So I move that bylaw number 4480 be read a second time.
Second.
So we have to have a public hearing. If anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I'll ask a second time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. And I will ask a third and final time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or bylaw, for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. All right, Singung, we will close the public hearing. Counselor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about this land use amendment and how it related to our strategic plan, our priorities, specifically key result 4.3 prioritize infill development and how this new development relates to that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Counselor Samraj. So this development is a private developer, obviously, who has had this land for some time and has an approved area structure plan in place and has been developing in phases. So this is phase 2D, I believe it's a 17 lot development.
Sorry, I think you're, this is on this, oh no, you're on the right one, sorry, yeah, yeah.
This is Hamptons, right?
Yeah, you are, sorry.
So, sorry, scare me here. So it's not directly related to council's strategic priorities, it's a private land developer, but the area structure plan is approved by MPC and council and it is in accordance with that plan and has been in existence for some time.
Thank you for that clarification, that helps a lot. Any other questions on second reading? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
So I move that the bylaw be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, under reports, we have item 6.1, the Administrative Committee meeting of June 6, 2018, and this report is for information on page 19 of your packet.
I move report for information.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report, item 6.2, the Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting of June 6, 2018, and this is on page 22. And item 1, lease of space, Pacific Coastal Airlines is for adoption, item 2 for information.
So moved.
One second, that.
Questions, comments? Counselor Turnbull?
Well, just in case anybody doesn't know, that is actually Wes yet, so, thank you. Because I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? We could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is item 6.3, the Public Services Committee meeting of June 11, 2018, on page 60 of your packet. Items 1 and 2 are for adoption and item 3 for information.
I move the report for adoption and information as indicated, and I'd like to speak to it briefly when there's a second, or.
I'll second. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, your worship. There are three items here, you'll see that the events assistance grants from the Arts Inheritage Advisory Board, these come to us periodically and that board does a tremendous job of making sure they meet the criteria and interviewing the group, so I hope you can support that. You'll see the goals for the youth advisory board, I've got a particular affection for that group of young people and they're small, but they're mighty, and I think you're going to see some interesting recommendations coming from them. They've got some things they're working on and you'll see in their goals, they're really on top of things already. The item I wanted to speak to briefly is item number 3, the Police Point Park art purchase.
That's item 2.
Item 2, sorry, pardon me. And you'll see that you're being asked to adopt a purchase of the Old Man Buffalo Stone sculpture that you actually have seen at this table before. And I know I'm reading it, I'm reading it with his permission and Wes is in the gallery already. I just wanted to touch on this briefly, so those at home who weren't, didn't have the advantage of meeting and, in fact, those of you who weren't there either, to hear about this. So as you know, Police Point Park interpretive center is going through quite an extensive renovation that they have been hoping for and saving for and working toward for many years. And it's really going to be quite a welcome addition. The recommendation you see here is the Buffalo Stone granite sculpture be placed there near, outside and near the renewed interpretive center. Mr. Bell says that in public art, there's always a swirling conversation regarding whether these selections should be art for art's sake or a memorial that is understandable. This sculpture seems to fit both categories. You know, it talks about, it highlights and draws attention to the significance of buffalo in our long-term heritage and the hunting culture and the wildlife conservation concerns in southern Alberta. I would invite you to share the enthusiastic vision to see the installation of this and make it a fruition in Police Point Park. It broadly embraces history, culture, science, conservation and art. And the thing that took me the most was the interpretive center sees it as an interactive piece of art. So it's not just there to look at and say, isn't that nice or isn't that interesting? It's going to be a source of interaction with the children. They can climb on it, they can feel it, they can understand it, they can ask questions about what in the heck is this and what does it mean to our history and my heritage? And so I think it's really a welcome addition. This purchase is a little bit, not what you're used to seeing, because it's actually not a city-owned facility as you've been accustomed to before, but this is a worthwhile purchase and I would really encourage you to support it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Counselor Varga?
First off to the chair, through the chair to Julie, I'm glad to see that so many applicants actually received money again. I'm always happy to see when there's more than not enough, where they get refused or I think all the people that were listed here will show the city proud and do some good things for the city. So I'm glad to see that they spent a lot of money on this one and gave lots of money out. As far as the buffalo, I got a question for you. Wherever it's going to go, I guess, Police Point Park is pretty desolate at nighttime and there's a lot of people that go through there. How are we going to stop it from getting vandalized once it's in place? I just have this vision that letting them crawl all over it or there's going to be some things that happen that might be not great for this sculpture in this area because there is a lot of people that go through that park at night and they do have a good time. And I'm a little worried about it, I guess, that it will get vandalized and this piece of artwork will be not so good-looking in a very few time, I guess. In short, I'd just love to know that before I say yes or no to whether it's a great place to put this art piece.
Do you want to try and answer that?
You know, your worship, I, I'm not sure I can. I don't like to be caught without an answer for something, but I, it's a worthwhile consideration. I know the, you know, I mean, during the day, obviously, the interpretive center and some evenings it's staffed, wonderful people out there, and they do shut the gates, but I know that you can walk through still and there's a lot of, a lot of traffic. I don't know, it's a stone structure, I think it'll withstand a lot of, a lot of things, but I don't know if anyone else has a better answer for you or not, Counselor Varga?
I'm sorry, I think you could ask that question of any piece of art out in the public, from the turn, turn, turn on the front lawn of the Espinade to some of the other pieces in the parks, you know. And it's unfortunate if somebody were to do that, but I don't know that we can ever totally insulate ourselves from vandalism. I don't know. Counselor Hirsch?
So, your worship, I appreciate the fact that, that I think this placement of this art, I think is appropriate as far as the location goes. I think you're right as far as the relevance. I do recall that this was somewhat, and maybe you can help me answer this question, whether or not this is the same piece of art that was considered at the Canalta. So I think from the scope perspective, I think this is a better area for it. I am, I am prepared to support it because it was within budget and I just think the appropriateness where it was before didn't make sense. Question I have, though, is to staff. The last time we had this discussion, there was a takeaway in terms of staff going back and reviewing the policy and the public art policy, specifically 0137, where we are doing 1% of the budget on any capital projects, et cetera. Is that in play where we're going to see some suggestions and amendments to that policy on a go-forward basis? Can you just help me understand that?
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Counselor Hirsch, we did not have clear direction from council on whether to bring those changes forward. There were some opinions around the table, but we never had direction of staff on what to do with that policy. Now, having said that, we are going through and looking at the mandates of all the advisory committees and boards that we have, and as part of that, also looking at the policies that they administer. And so it would be a natural time to review this policy as well in the context of the mandate of the public art committee and where it fits and how it advises council and so on. So that's a process coming up that we would undertake to do that, but we have not been told by council specifically to go back and revise this policy.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Dimanowski?
Well, your worship, I'd like to enthusiastically endorse the purchase and positioning of this Old Man Buffalo Stone sculpture. I think it's already been said and outlined by some of the background information from Mr. Wes Bell and Counselor Friesen. It's very much an appropriate placement of this public art. I think it will create a lot of, generate a lot of conversation and storytelling and it's appropriate that it be in that particular park, which is rich in history. And, you know, the fact that this art, you know, quite literally is three-dimensional and gives a tactile opportunity for kids, the public, anybody to enjoy and to talk about is really the whole object of art and its appreciation and in saying that, appreciating that it's in the eye of the beholder, but I think it's very appropriately suited and I'm pleased that we found a place for it. As far as graffiti, et cetera, or anything that of that nature, I mean, as you said, your worship, that can happen anywhere. We have public art throughout the city, we have, we have even murals and walls in downtown area and other areas that are typically untouched, even in the graffiti world. There's a, there's a notion that people respect art and they respect it for what it is and they tend to leave it alone, quite frankly, and I hope I haven't jinxed any of that, but I really believe this will be the same and I'm just very appreciative that the hard work that has been put forward by the public art committee, who does a great job, will hopefully be endorsed by council today.
Thank you. Counselor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will admit that when I saw this buffalo come across in the briefing note, it took me by surprise. I was not, I was not expecting to see it again come before me. It is, it is an interesting scenario here to see it here again. I know that public art is always something that's controversial. I, and I know that our policy is written in a way that's very similar to other cities. I don't, I don't accept that it has to be controversial. I do think that the policy should be looked at and perhaps I will make an amendment here to move acceptance of these, of these three items for adoption and to direct staff to review, to review this policy and come back with other options.
So you're making a motion to, for staff to review the arts and the purchase, sorry, the public art purchase policy?
That's right.
Do you have a second, or?
Just clarification first. Because you said review the policy, I understand that, and then you said come back with options, which would imply to me that you meant on these items, but I don't think that's what you meant, so I just want to be clear.
That's why I changed it to just number 2, I didn't think you meant number 1 and 3.
Yes, that's just, just on the policy, that's correct. I do not have a second, or this just, I guess what I'm trying to, there certainly does seem to be some appetite to review this and I think judging by, I mean, tonight especially is a very sobering night regarding the financial situation of the city. I think, I think it is a good time to, to look at these things. I realize that we're already looking at committees and the structure of these things, but I think it's probably worthwhile to give staff some direct direction here on this issue.
Second.
Point of procedure, your worship, I, nothing against Counselor Samraj's recommendation, but I don't believe, I believe is out of order in asking staff to take this back and directing them to review a policy and bring it back. There is a process and a mechanism to do that. You can make a notice of motion, you can ask public services to heed any friendly recommendation that you have to do that. The Public Services Committee would look at that. Otherwise, it would have to be brought here as a point of notice of motion and council would have to endorse it.
I'm going to have to tend to agree with Counselor Dimanowski on this one. I don't know that it would be up to staff even to make the recommendations without input from city council on the policy going direct forward, so.
Fair enough, I'll withdraw.
So we're back to the original two items for adoption and the number 3 for information. Counselor Friesen?
You know what, I think I'll pass.
Okay, Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, worship. I just had a question. Counselor Friesen said the, we don't own the Police Point, is that, it's not a publicly-owned building by the City of Medicine Hat?
I was actually wondering that myself, because that statement was made and then I was trying to think that, I mean, I don't know about the building.
Because if we don't own it, then there is no arts. In my opinion, would be no ruling to spend art on that building if we don't particularly own it.
So, we do own it? Now, and the impetus here is behind this is that there has been some third-party grant funding, there has been capital improvements and had the city paid for those capital improvements, we would have had a 1% perhaps allocation for art, maybe. But it's almost, it's all third-party funding from the Hotel Accommodation Association and some various other, I think. You want to correct me?
No, I don't want to correct you through the chair.
No, go ahead and do correct me.
So we own the building, we don't operate it.
Right.
This is a renovation project, we normally probably would not have an allocation of art money to this, and this is not money allocated to a capital project. This comes out of the art reserve. You'll recall when, when this was rejected the first time around for Canalta, council said put that money into the reserve. So there's an opening in that policy to bring forward proposals from the art committee to spend the money out of the reserve, which is what they're doing today, so it's not connected to a capital project per se, it is an allocation from the existing art reserve.
Yes, but there is a major capital improvement project going on out there.
There is.
Into the tune of about $300,000, which is almost a basically refresh of the entire building, and I walk by it every day. So if we were paying for that, you could maybe perhaps argue that we would set aside some money for art, even though we're not paying for it, so I could see, and I'm pretty sure it's around $300,000. So 1% would be 30, this is much, this is below that. So that's 10, that would be 1%, sorry, 700,000? So that's 10, that would be 1, 3%, sorry, 700,000? Okay, so there you go. 1, 1% would be 7,000, so this is over that, but.
I, I don't wanna interrupt and I, I should've been more clear. We, I, I didn't really mean that we don't own any of it, I really meant that we didn't, we have not put any money towards this, you know, the, the money that went to the, towards this major renovation, uh, did not come out of our budget this year and this, this policy is not typical of our usual policy about setting aside money for our new capital project. I, so I, my apology, I wasn't clear. And I did check the policy and it does allow the Public Art Committee, it's frankly within the policy, may initiate and promote a public art component at potential public art sites. So it is within the criteria of the public art policy, so I just, I should've been more clear on that.
So I, I did have a follow-up that, but I didn't get a chance. So I'm going to support, support it because the Art Inheritors Committee have followed the rules set down by the, uh, the council of the day. Had I known that, I thought the money, when we turned down that project, that the money would go to the reserve fund for future new buildings, so that if we were to go over $100,000, we'd have that extra 20,000 in there, or if some other project needed to uh, like that. So, it was my mistake, I wasn't, obviously, I didn't educate myself well enough on that. I do believe that we should make that change. Uh, I, I do think that, I call this, uh, in the football terms, and run to get the Buffalo. And I will support it, um, but I don't like it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councillor McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, the, the questions that I had, I think have just been clarified over the last few discussions, because the, the biggest question I had was how all of a sudden, because it wasn't included in the initial budget, um, was the, the Art Committee able to approve this? And the reality is they can approve a, an art piece anywhere they would like to in the city, so that's, that's the key.
Thank you, Councillor Somraj.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify things for the, something for the audience here. I mean, for me, consistency and transparency are important in these decisions, transparencies, when we just talk about the decision, about why we make some of the decisions, but policy is in place to guide some of our decision-making and although some of us may, may have concerns about public art, as long as Policy 137, the current policy is in effect, then I think it is, we, we definitely have to support the recommendations that the Public Art Committee brings forth, because that exactly is what this policy authorizes them to do. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? We can vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is item 6.4, the Audit Committee Meeting of June 12th, and this is page 71 of your packet and it's for information.
Move information. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have one, through the chair, I guess to the CAO. Um, there are a lot of really good information in here. I, what I wondered was, if we're getting, we're getting fairly, you know, debt is always a concern of mine. Servicing the debt we have is a concern of mine and recognizing that there is a threshold at which we, you know, we have to honor that threshold, it's not like we can just accumulate a, a debt and, and pay it off at a certain ratio, where, you know, there's some governing principles here. So my question is, if we, and this isn't for right now, but if we were at a point in time where we had to look at another turbine or the, or addition of another major capital expenditure, would we be within our, the, the acceptable threshold of debt servicing if we had to pay for it with debt as we did the last turbine we incorporated?
Through the chair, that, to Councillor Friesen, that's a very difficult question to answer, because are we talking replacement of an existing turbine, are we talking a look-alike Unit 16, are we talking cogeneration? I mean, additional capacity can take so many different forms and, and that's part of what we are working on right now, is to look at what those options are and how we might cost them. Um, I think the short answer is yes, the capacity is there in GenCo as such to take on additional debt, um, up towards those kinds of limits, but having said that, um, there are also an awful lot of capital investments outside of new turbine capacity coming up in GenCo for the next few years. So, you know, this will be part of the, the long-term performa that we'll be working on towards the 10-year capital plan and the budget approval at the end of the year, so a tentative yes?
Okay, and I, I, just to be clear, I mean, I just, that was just an example that came to my mind, I didn't have anything specific. I thought of a new turbine, I mean, I realize there are all kinds of capital considerations that we have to be looking at, but I, I just, I, you know, I always worry about the debt and not just the debt, but servicing the debt within the thresholds that have been prescribed for us and so I, it was a, it was a hypothetical question, but one that concerns me a little bit when I look down the road and some of the potential business we have and what the meaning of that is for us as well financially.
Councillor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. Just have a question on item number two, and when going through this report, I noticed a few references on, under various departments about a major upgrade to our software package, Agresso, and I'm just wondering, seeing we just got that installed, why we're already doing a major upgrade? I, I understand just through the grapevine that this thing isn't working maybe as well as, as it should, so maybe this is an effort to fix it, I don't know, but.
Through the Chair to Councillor Turner, Agresso is working and working well. Um, we did, uh, we did not implement all full functionality when we went live with it, so there are certainly some additional components that, that are being added. And the key thing with Agresso is that we will be doing frequent upgrades, because we're not going to get caught like we did with J.D. Edwards, we were eight years out of date and, and no upgrades and it didn't talk to any of our systems. Uh, we were essentially completely siloed in our financial system and severely hampered in our reporting and, and our analysis of numbers. So upgrades are just part of normal maintenance. Um, we're not talking major upgrades sort of of the scope of the initial implementation or anything like that, it's just part of the normal cycle of keeping that software current.
Um, so when it comes to the implementation of the new performance measures, I'm just looking at the one with the actual debt service to revenue ratio percentage, it said expected result is 20 or 28% for municipalities with a higher total revenue, yet in all of our statements it says 35.35. So according to this, if I'm, unless I'm misreading this, we are over the expected result from the province. Does anybody notice that? I should've noticed that admin, but.
Yeah.
It's a result, it's on page six of the, but as far as I know, other than perhaps that, we are onside with all these measures. So for now, we're okay. But did you, maybe Commissioner Mastel, I don't know, it says 20 to 28 and we're actually, our benchmark is, is .35. Anyway, you can answer later.
Can you just, sorry?
So page six, so it says debt service to revenue percentage and it said the expected result is that will not exceed 20% of revenue or 28% for, for municipalities with higher regular debt limit, that would be us. Uh, but yet we in our, all of our things, all of our, it says .35, we're allowed to have, our servicing ratio can be .35 of total revenue, so these numbers I think are, we are either, the province is trying to raise their expectations or.
Uh, your worship, I, I'm taking a guess here, but I, I think this is an indicator and that would be a point where they would indicate some financial strain. .35 would be the limit at which you'd then be on, on a debt watch. So I, I think it's pared back a little bit from 35% to 28.
To 28, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is item 6.5, the Corporate Services Committee Meeting of June 12th, and this report is for adoption and information on page 127 and items one to seven are for adoption, item eight for information.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Councillor Somraj?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question about the tax cancellation policy there and the, in particular, the criteria that anything over 5,100% increase is, comes up for forgiveness. I was wondering, is that, is that a local policy or is that in the MGA? I was just wondering how those thresholds get set, because I imagine that there are other tax increases for other property owners that are civilly burdensome, that, that don't get, that don't meet that particular criteria.
So that's a local policy implemented in 2013 by the previous council after the tax assessments, uh, well, I'm not gonna say blow up, but it was a blow up in 2013, so the council, I think, did it in probably 2014, maybe around 2013. But it's local.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and these ones are actually in somewhat unique because they were farmland that were, some of them were reassessed as commercials and the burden was not just 100%, it was 800% increase and so we tried to phase it in. Councillor Dymansky?
Yeah, I was gonna say they're local, but just to add that they are in compliance with the MGA, obviously we have the provision to do, to council as we see fit based on criteria and, and council of the day saw that criteria and has held true to it in this particular case.
Any other questions? Yes, Councillor Somraj?
I have another question about the, the hiring of the two HVAC technicians. I understand, uh, I was there at committee meeting when we talked about the benefits of, of using labor when, when there are particular jobs that come up frequently there and I, and I see that the, the cost for in-house labor compared to contracted out is, is cheaper as well, but I was wondering if, how we factor in additional long-term costs of, of city employees regarding pensions and, and all of that and whether that, that is, how, how that's factored in? Thank you.
So through the chair, the hourly rate used there is a fully loaded one that includes all benefits, pensions, vacation entitlements, I mean, we, we loaded it up with absolutely everything, so it's, that's not the hourly rate paid to the worker, it is a fully loaded, including all benefits.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments? Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is item 6.6, the Administrative Committee Meeting of June 13th, page 173 and items one and two are for adoption and three and four for information.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
So, um, with council's consent, I would like to deal with item one first, depending on the outcome of item one, I would like to deal with item two second, and then depending on, well, not depending on the outcome of that, and then we'll deal with items three and four combined, if that's all right. Councillor Hirsch on item one?
Yes, it is. So, your worship, uh, as you can kinda see the, in the preamble and the presentation by, uh, Mr. Commissioner Mastel, um, we're in a bit of a crossroads in terms of our city finances. And I just kinda reflect on the adage of, you never know how good you had it until it's gone. And we're certainly in a bit of that situation right now in a financial, financial hole in our operating. So realistically, this goes back, obviously, decades where the dividend was attributed and proceeds of our, our utilities and NGPR and, and the money-making side of the City Madison Hat contributed to the viability and the success of taxpayers and offset their taxes. So I reflected over this in the last few months in terms of our heritage and, and our history, but having said that, I think we need to, to look forward as prudent individuals that are responsible for the city's finances. And I come at this as a, as a 20-year banker, so I am a little bit tilted and unfortunately I'm conservative in that, that nature, uh, which I don't really apologize for, uh, but having said that, I do have understanding the political nature and the sensitivity with regards to what we hold dear and that being the dividend. But having said that, I was on council 10 years ago when we had $200 million in the bank. Uh, recent, more recently enough, we had $80 million, from which $70 million was spent to spare the taxpayer during our financially fit scenario and, and as you can see, we're trying to unwind that, uh, because it's just simply unsustainable. So it is a disturbing trend where we're going from 200 million to 80 to zero, which is contemplated, only to balance it up to $16 million, um, with a potential dividend to our, to our, to put money back into the cupboard, if you will. We are already witnessing increased debt limits, um, and quite frankly, it was a difficult question to answer that Councillor Friesen proposed on future debt borrowings, because it depends on the snapshot of time. So don't forget under the MGA that we only get measured on two times our revenue, so every year, um, that could definitely swing. And having seen that our business side, our business operations certainly have not been as profitable over the years that has been and going forward is, may not be, um, the virtue alone that our revenues would be dwindling only presumes that that devil, that level will increase and we wouldn't have had to spend a dollar up or down and we would naturally be in a situation where we couldn't be in a, in a bit more of a debt situation, that would be very concerning to all of us. So, and I guess, having said that, and it's good news, right? We've got good news on the horizon, we've got HUD 8, there's Aurora coming to town, our economy's turning. The unfortunate thing is, is that we're still not picking up to the speed that we need to get at in order to fund our deficit. So my concern is, we went from 200 million to 80 to zero and we're kind of inching back, adding some more in, but my question to everyone is, are we prepared for the next downturn? So what do you mean by that? Well, let's look on the macro level in terms of, of world events, let's look at our country level in terms of incoming carbon tax, cert, political uncertainty, which would absolutely be, depending on the decisions of that day, put us into a tailspin that we've never seen before. And I guess my argument is, to everyone, is are we prepared? So on the revenue side, our prospects for revenue of our oil and helium and gas is questionable, we're, we're trying to do what we can in regards to that, but it certainly isn't money in the bank that we were used to doing. Uh, moreover, it's good to see electric post some good dividends, but we've already heard that that might be questionable after the next two years. So for, for example, and, and obviously then from a revenue perspective, our future is murky at best for revenue, so, but having said that, we've got an operational deficit that we need attention to. So our revenue side is questionable. So let's look at the expense side. So before we ever go to the taxpayer, I'm adamant that we need to look at expenses, that's just good fiscal management, and I'm telling you as Chair of the Audit Committee, we are undertaking a very specific and surgical review of every department within the City of Madison Hat. There is an attempt to do what we can in terms of efficiency and moreover, there's actually reviews of service cuts to what we provide our citizens of Madison Hat. What that looks like in the future for us is, is anyone's guess. I, I pride ourselves in delivering a high level of services and attractions that make Madison Hat a stand apart from its competitors or other municipalities for that matter, but having said that, I guess the question may be, is that sustainable in the long term? So depending on our future prospects, more cuts may be required. And don't forget, based on the financially fit model, if we still go ahead with MCAF in its full entirety, $4 million is still left at the end of the, at the end of the term that we're looking at in the next three years. So I still need to understand how we were gonna be able to fund that, but having said that, perhaps, and I've already spoken to this, is we need some kind of shred still of a bit of a, of a history and maybe, just maybe, we can have $4 million as a dividend or some sort of level of sustainability, but folks, it's not guaranteed. So in the future, we're walking a tightrope. Depending on which way we're headed, economic winds back and forth could determine whether or not we're successful in our initiative, but for me, that's very disconcerting. Uh, we need some certainty in the operation of our budget. I'm not so sure we have it right now on a go-forward basis, so I am in favor of MCAF, I am in favor of some sustainability, of replenishing our cash that we spent and, and I don't apologize for it, I think it was something that would've absolutely had a tax shock to our citizens. And I don't apologize for the efforts in terms of what was done, however, being prunit money managers means that we have to replenish and I think there's movement and a feeling within Madison Hat that accepts what the, what this is gonna be looking like going forward. They recognize that they rely on our. our administration and our government to be strong and well-supported. And I think there's going to be some, some support for our initiative. But in order for this initiative to pass, I am prepared to listen to any compromises to ensure MCAF is introduced, but to avoid a worst-case scenario. Having to fund an operational budget with nothing in the cupboard, other than the taxpayer, is suicidal on a go-forward basis. If we were left with a situation where we don't have any money to support the taxpayer, and we look at a $12 million deficit that we have to find money somewhere, and we've been told through this horseshoe that roughly 1% gives us $750,000 of revenue, I challenge people to do the math and how much of a tax increase that would be on a go-forward basis if we're not prudent with our decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McIntosh.
Thanks, your worship. Going back to the early days of the Financial Fit discussion, the priority number one was to get the city off the reliance of the dividend to fund annual budget operations. And I would say that some significant work has been done, going from a $24 million reliance down to approximately 16. But we are at very difficult times now because the hard decisions need to be made. The levers that were identified, I think, were incredibly fair. They looked at a variety of different areas within the city. And where we're at right now is figuring out what the right lever is to pull and how hard that we need to pull it. My huge concern, sitting on the Audit Committee for five years and the Energy Committee for five years, is where our reserves have gone. We have gone from a healthy reserve balance to depleting our electrical reserve as we've moved significant amounts of money into our tax stability fund, which is going to be gone. Mr. Mastel showed a very interesting slide that showed the next four years. And around that slide was a little rectangle. I would call it the window. And the next three and a half years is this council's window to move us off of that reliance of that dividend. MCAF is a key component of it. And I have been a supporter of it, and I will be supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski.
Your worship, a lot has been said. I don't want to repeat much of it, but I wholeheartedly endorse the words that have come out from Counselor Hirsch and McIntosh. Setting the stage quickly, obviously, we had an update on our Financially Fit reported. It's, it's very easy to sit back and, and kind of look at it and the one side of my mind be confused and bewildered by how we got here. And, and yet, having been here, and I've often said that, I've been here long enough, and I try to use that to my, to my benefit or leverage, I have to say, we've sat here many terms. And, you know, I, I recall even back at the beginning, we, we had these conversations around our, our dividend policy and, and a little bit of history. We used to have a growing dividend. It used to grow. And the expectation was, you know what? Gosh darn it, we have this public utility. It needs to return to its shareholders. But at the same time, we were artificially holding our, our commodity rates at unrealistic levels. And so we had, in, in some cases, the perfect scenario or the perfect storm. And we, we used to, I hate to say it, but muse at the thought that this dividend will no longer be sustainable. I mean, it was unimaginable, unimaginable. At the very least, we thought it would be something that would, we'd be challenged to do over a very protracted period of time. And of course, the, the world knows, everyone knows what happened to our commodity-based environment and the changes and, and the unimaginable and the worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario occurred. And everybody, I don't want to say was caught off guard, but we were, we were not given the opportunity to, to foresee something like this, especially at the, at the rate that it was going to occur. So we've taken some necessary steps and some pretty significant steps, as already been outlined, to use reserves to offset this dividend shortfall with the hope, with the plan endorsed through Financially Fit to get us out of it. A 10-year plan. Not an easy one, but a 10-year one at that. Commissioner Mastel made the comment that this is a plan, this, the goal, sorry, is to find a plan that moves us toward a solution. Financially Fit is a plan, and I have to say, the past council, which I was part of, deviated from it already. And this council did the same. And, and it's easy to sit here and say, well, we just did a small thing, or we didn't do this. This is the third time, I believe, that the municipal consent access fee is before us. I've supported it each and every time because it is an integral part, an integral switch in the Financially Fit model. It, it is an absolute must of many in that solution to get us to the end goal. When I look at the MCAF and the opportunity to, to put these fees in place, it's not an easy one, just because it's available to us. When I compare us to Lethbridge, Edmonton, Red Deer, it's outlined in the background information. What we're proposing is minute compared to what those communities currently have in place as far as their methodology for, for their tariff or their, their MCAF. We are, we are measuredly moving toward a solution, again, a, a switch in our, in our Financial Fit model, which is dependent, heavily dependent on this. It's not an easy decision. It will present a new challenge for the ratepayer, but it, it is supported because, by me, and I believe, I, I hope, council, because it, it moves us in the right direction. But it is going to be a, a fee, not at the expense of, of hiding an unusually high tax increase, but one that hits the ratepayer who may not be a taxpayer, or it might be one of the same. But in the end, we are using an approach that is used by every municipality outside of Medicine Hat, to my knowledge, and, and we're using it very transparently in the mechanism in which it was intended. When we look at the debt and, and when I did the quick math, 90% of it, 95% of it is, is rate-supported, meaning it's utility-owned. 5%, 10% is on our municipal side. But nonetheless, it is, these are fees, these are rates that, or debts that we have to work with and erode over time. Our revenue shortfall is challenging us. We need to shore up, obviously, this dividend displacement that we've come to understand and, and accept. And the Financial Fit model with an MCAF is the solution. I guess my, my point and my challenge to council is that this is not an easy decision, but it is the right decision. And, and I really believe, as Counselor Hirsch said, we have not only the responsibility, we've been elected recently to, to make these difficult decisions. And I can tell you, having been here before, that the public, and, and my endorsement of this in the past, it wasn't supported by council, but my endorsement of it was, was only received, wasn't received excitedly, but it, they, they took it and understood it for what it was and said, you know, Counselor Dumanowski, I understand when you're supporting that and you're putting it forward, you're doing it because you're trying to find a solution. And it's not my solution, but I'm, I'm one of nine people who have to contribute to that. And I'm contributing it to it today again. So I challenge this council to be on the right side of history on this one. I really believe fundamentally that this is a, a key lever that we must have the courage to pull. And I ask for you to have that courage tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I for one, never want to see a, a fee increase or a tax increase. But I think we're at the point where, when you're, when you have a $16 million deficit, you just can't increase taxes enough to cover it or cut expenses enough to cover it. You have to come up with a balanced approach. And when Counselor Dumanowski says we artificially kept some of our, our utility prices low, we also were able to artificially keep our taxes low because of that dividend. When I was reading my notes, I just happened to see that comparison with the Lethbridge. So the average home price in, in Medicine Hat is $246, $246,900. If you go to the city of Lethbridge and type in that value in their tax calculator, that same home value in Lethbridge, that homeowner would pay $449 more per year in taxes. That's a 19.12% higher tax rate in Lethbridge compared to Medicine Hat. If we went to Lethbridge tax rates, our deficit would be gone. But who can afford to come up with a 20% increase in their taxes in one year? But we've, we've had the luxury all these years of, of having lower taxes. And, you know, it's unfortunate. Maybe if we would have set a little more money aside, maybe we would have had, not had this mess we're in right now. But we are in a mess. And we have to, we, we just can't run a deficit. You know, we can't be like other levels of government. When you're in a deficit, you just go and borrow money. We can't do that. So we have to come up with a, with a method to, to come up with that money. And I'm in favor, I was actually against this, this fee last time. But having taken a serious look at what our options are, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of it now. I think we have to do that. There is just far too much uncertainty in the future. Yes, we're going to generate pretty good electric revenues this year, next year, maybe the year after. There's no guarantees there. So do we kick the can down the road some more? Or do we make the tough decision and, and move forward with this? And I'm urging council to support this as well.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen. Or thank you, now Counselor Friesen.
You can thank me if you like. Well, as you can probably expect, I have a little, I have a little different, maybe not a different point of view. I, I have another perspective. And, you know, I, I can tell you, I have really been struggling with this. We've, we've talked about this a lot. We have to talk about it, and I understand that. And I just, for me, it's a, it's just a, a real struggle because I know how an additional tax will impact people. And so I've just, I've hardly slept all weekend worrying about this. But, you know, we have to deal with it. We have to come to a decision. As the points that everyone has made so far, I mean, who can argue with them? Absolutely solid points. I respect those opinions. And, and I, I hope you can expect mine, or respect rather mine. I think that, well, I, I'm pretty sure that this kind of a tax hits those that can least afford it with the greatest amount of impact, more so than a tax increase. That's one consideration for me. I'm, I'm absolutely concerned about implementing yet another tax when people are struggling. And I realize we're lower. I realize that. When they're already struggling with the tax, I look at the amount of money this represents, is going to represent, and it's not a huge total amount on a bill. But you know what? When it compares to the amount of the increase many, many folks on fixed income gets, it get, it's way higher than the increase that they get, if they get any at all. So those, those are considerations of mine. And I, and I think they're also valid. Having said that, I, I know that we cannot continue to rely on the revenues that we have coming in. We don't know what they're going to be. And we can't continue to rely on something to pay for our operating expenses and other expenses over time and, and draining our, draining our, our financial reserves and our financial accountability to the people we serve. So those are my, those are my huge struggles. So I've, I've, I've thought about making a motion to, not to implement this this year, but to ask that we look at it again next year. I realize that I, you know, I've, I, as I've been listening and I heard Counselor Turner say, we can't kick the can down the road another time. And I, I, I don't want to say this, but my, my fiscal self says, we don't really have a choice here. So I'm, but I am going to make a motion that I think we have to soften this for people a little bit. And we have to help them prepare for what's going to happen. And I think we are at least in a position for the next two or three years where we, we know we can expect some, some additional electric revenues. I'm not wanting to spend a whole bunch of them, but I would like to soften our position on this. And I would like to propose that we implement option three that is in your council packet, which is, which is a 1% electric, 1% gas in 2019, which is significantly less money than the proposal or the recommendation you have in front of you. And that we continue on down the path then in implementation in, in segments over time that is, are more palatable to people. I don't want to make, I do not want to make this motion. I don't want to do it. I do not want to vote for this at all. I just feel like, I just feel sick. But I think that we have to be fiscally responsible. Counselor Hirsch said something to me on the way in. He said, Julie, you can't always think about a certain segment of people. You have to think about all the people we serve. And I try to do that. And I'm trying to do that now. So it, it hurts me to make this motion. But I move, whether there's a second or not, that we go to option three on page 178, which is the far softened approach to the implementation of this tax.
Do we have a second? Okay, that motion fails due to lack of a second. Okay, Counselor Somraj, did you want to say anything else, Counselor Friesen? Okay, Counselor Somraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Back to the original motion. It's on, largely a recommendation for adoption.
I, I will not be supporting the municipal consent and access fee this evening, although I certainly understand why the other counselors may support it. During the election, we knew this four-year period was going to be very difficult. And like some of the councils have said, this is not a problem that we can fix by cutting our way out of there. My solution, because the mayor did challenge us to provide solutions if we were going to vote against this, my solution is not going to be palatable to, to everybody else here. My solution is to put this completely on property tax increases. So, which would mean 7% increases for the next three years. My rationale for this is, it's going to be the same kind of either way here. I mean, whether it's coming on your electric utility bill or whether it's coming on your property taxes, it's going to the same place and we're using it for the same amount. What I think it does do, it is extremely clear and honest and direct. And I think it's a wake-up call for everybody in this community about, about the challenges the city is facing right now. Now, 20% sounds horrible over three years, but I mean, we need to put it in some context. And I think Counselor Turner has done a good job of that. And I think the slide when Commissioner Mastel presented this also, also did that. When we're asking so much of residents, I think it is, it is on us to, to demonstrate that we are doing our part here at City Hall. And I think the, the slide that shows that, you know, if we, if we resolve this, this gap through property tax increases, it brings us in line with Lethbridge spending. I think that is a compelling, that is a compelling slide. But I mean, this is a conversation that we're going to have to have over and over again and defend this budget in, in the community, which I am prepared to do. But, but I won't be supporting MCAF, but I will support property tax increases to make up this difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Varga.
So through the chair, I too will not be supporting this. I, I believe last time we, we voted on this, I did not also support the, the move to have an MCAF. I believe maybe this is the way to go down the road. When you, you ask for solutions is, is through the property tax. I mean, it is going to affect every person, 28,000 residential lots within our community have a ta, have a bill, a utility bill that they get every month. And I know it's a, a fast way to grab the money, or grab the money, not grab the money, but collect the money over the next three, four years within this budget. But I think for the, for the part of a lot of people within our community that we know, it's going to be a struggle. It's going to be a struggle with finding that extra cash to pay their utility bills and hopefully consider themselves where they're not going to use as much electricity, where they're not going to use as much gas. And in our community, that's pretty tough to do when the air conditioner's got to run in the summertime. And of course, the furnace has got to run in the wintertime. And that's where the two main taxes come from, or the extra fees come from. So I struggle with that because there is a lot of people that right now are having a tough time getting along and doing stuff within our community and having that extra disposable income so that they can feed their families and, and pay their bills. I mean, community worth, community warmth only has so much money in it every year for those people that struggle every year. And I think by, by bringing this on board, we're going to have a lot more people that are going to struggle and, and see that application form being filled out much more and hoping that they're going to get some money in the future. So unfortunately, I don't think we can go down that path again. But I, I hear the rest of you. I really do. But I, I think a lot of people, more than you think, are going to struggle within our community. So I am not going to support it.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski.
Well, your worship, we, we could definitely go back and forth. And I appreciate and, and I do value
And I, I appreciate and, and I do value the, the differing opinions. Not, there's no one around this table that doesn't recognize the burden it, it creates for everybody. The, those who can least afford it will be hit the worst, as I heard councillor Freeson said and say, pardon me. And for me, shoring up the community warmth fund in some fashion, our utilities poised to make some money. I mean, you, you can back end that support. The people who meet the criteria through our St Fitz de Paul and, and others who, who give out those dispersals funds will, will have, the salvation army, thank you, will have the, the support in place. And we need to do our part to do more there, if that's the case. But those who may, with the greatest respect, not necessarily like the increase, but can, can handle the increase, will be positioned to deal with that. And, and fortunately or unfortunately, we, we have no other way out of this. I, I do, I do give a huge accolade to councillor Samraj for having the courage to say it. It will be a tax increase. There is no other shell. If we don't support this, you're supporting a minimum seven to eight percent tax increase. The, the optics are, of course, well, we're just sliding it here. We're not, because I, I know the CIO has said it before, and she can validate today, that the MCAF spreads it out to more users, more ratepayers than it would on the tax side. So it is a, not maybe on a significant level, but it does spread the burden. It is a burden. It spreads a burden out. Those who need the support, we shore up. Maybe we look at HAT Smart. We, we're talking about policies. We take some funds that we would normally put towards HAT Smart, just throwing it out there, and we put it, shore up our, our community warmth. We protect those who will and insulate those who will be most impacted by this. But we don't move away from the, the, the need and the courage to make the, the right decision here. I really believe that. And I know it's easy for me to sit here and say, well, you should support me because this is the right decision. It is, without a doubt, in my opinion, not an easy decision, but it is the right decision. And, and short of doing that, we are, we are signaling to the media, to the public, watch out for significant tax increases, because there is no other shell we can dig from under.
Thank you councillor Turnbull.
Thank you, your worship. We have a hundred and twenty-five million dollar shortfall for our long-term liabilities for gas of our three thousand wells for abandonment and reclamation. Think about that number. That's a huge, huge number. That doesn't count what will cost us for, when we have to do the abandonment in Menneberries and Aurora Wells or the abandonment that costs of our partnership with Enter, Enter, Enter Plus in the Glock C. So folks, we have substantial amounts of money that unfortunately, up till today, couple, the last couple of years, our utilities were both losing money. Both NGPR and Agenco were both losing money. So there was no dividend, period. And so we have been taking money out of our reserves for the last three or four years to the tune of seventy million dollars. Now, I, I don't like tax increases. I don't like fee increases. But I would like to give kudos to our retiring CIO for financially fit for the future. I wasn't on council when it was brought through. And her, her chief, her chief executives, an excellent plan. And we're down to sixteen million. And part of that going forward is the ability to find more revenue. So folks, we either have to get more revenue or we have to lower our costs, or we have to have a combination of both. That's just the reality of any operation. So I, I, I will support MCAF, but I want to make a proposal that is not option one or option two or option three. I'm sorry, we're getting to a lot of options here. And I'll tell you why. We, we talked about, and we had a little survey in the Medicine Hat News. Our public, our citizens said what they preferred was not to do, the, the majority said, let's find, see if we can find a balance here. See if we can find a balance between paying down our debts and, and, and keeping our city operating at efficiency. So I don't know where I was going, but I lost my train of thought there, sorry. Anyways, so I, I look out and say, I know what I know today. Four years from now, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know if the trade war with the United States is going to cause Canadian economic downside. I don't know where the price of oil is going to go, if Trump's going to tax that as well as a tariff. I don't know where the commodity prices for electricity or gas are going to go in the foreseeable future. So for us to, to take a four or five-year budget and determine that we can, we can draw so much from dividends or so much from here when we have no idea of where we're going in, in the short term. So my proposal is this. I believe that we need two million dollars on this twenty nineteen year to keep financially fit, on track, to get us down to twelve million dollars. And two million dollars of that was to come from MCAF. So I'm going to make a proposal that in twenty nineteen, we set a rate in electric of three point five percent, which is eighty-three dollars a month on your electric bill. And I'm going to.
In a year?
No, eighty-three dollars a month to pay for, at twenty nineteen, to pay for the million dollars that we require. Just let, let me finish, okay? And then you can jump in, all right? I listened to you for all night. So let, give me a chance to finish my, my thought. So the two million dollars, I'm, I'm, I'm supposing that we get one million dollars from MCAF for twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen and one million dollars out of whatever reserve we choose to take it from, whether it's a dividend or some other reserve. So to raise the million dollars on MCAF for this, for the citizens would have to pay eighty-three dollars a month for their electric bill and on their gas bill at four percent would have to pay one dollars and thirty-three a month or two dollars and sixteen cents for a month for the year of twenty nineteen. And I propose that we have zero in twenty twenty, zero in twenty twenty-one, and zero in twenty twenty-two. And I say that because a year from now, we will know better what is ahead of us, whether Jenko will continue to, to, to provide the dividend it's doing. And also, here's the thing, everybody brings up about, well, what about new generation? And where are we going to get the money? Actually, part of, a part of the money coming from Jenko should go back into their reserves so that they can ensure that their operations and the equipment they need is brought up to date. So plus the fact is, we have another whole year for council to study where we can find savings on the cost side. So that's that revenue increase and that cost side reduction.
So I'm going to.
Yeah, sorry. Yes, eighty-three cents a month, sorry. For electric and a dollar thirty-three a month for gas for a total of two dollars and sixteen cents a month, which is slightly over twenty-four dollars a year. I think it's twenty-five it comes to.
So if I can, please bear with me, if I can clarify your motion, basically to implement, implement the MCAF at a fifty percent of the proposed rate and then find the other fifty percent, which would be from the tax stabilization fund funded by the Jenko dividend.
Yes.
That would be, so I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
But also.
And then review it, zero from now on, reviewing it each year.
Yes, that, that's my proposal. Thank you, your worship.
So I, I can't make the motion, but that's the clarified motion. And if anybody would like to second that?
Second.
Okay, so we are moving, debating whether or not we should implement it at a fifty percent go forward and fifty percent coming from the dividend out of Jenko into the tax rate stabilization fund to be reviewed each subsequent year of this council's term. Any questions, comments on the motion as amended? Councillor Turner, you're listed next. Would you like to speak on that?
Thank you, your worship. I guess, first of all, to comment on councillor Varga's comment about, yes, there are folks in the community that this would hurt quite badly. But how much would it hurt them two years from now? If we don't move forward with this, and then, and then the situation is much worse. With all due respect councillor Turnbull, you, you started your series talking about the reserves being, you didn't want the reserves to be reduced, but now you're saying you want to reduce them by a million. So I, I just, I have to go back to my original comments that I would like to see us move forward with the original recommendation from staff. But I guess it's going to be a matter of, are we going to have the votes to pass that?
Okay, councillor Hirsch on the amended motion?
Well, your worship might somewhat might wonder why I supported and seconded councillor Turnbull's suggestion. Ultimately, folks, I look at it from a perspective that it's not if, it's when. I apologize in terms of the situation that we find ourselves in. The toughest decisions are ones that are, are never easy to make. You can see the angst across every councillor's face and, and what to do. But when we look at it from the collective and where do we go from here? I really don't have any answers for people that feel that we can defer this any longer. But I'm struck with a chord that I'm, I'm hopeful that this, this ability to bridge the gap between people that are a little bit nervous of this added tax, if you will. And councillor Samraj, I think your point being that you wanted a tax. Well, my point is, is a microphone's right in front of me. I'm saying, I don't really, it's a tax, it's a source of revenue for this administration and this government to be able to balance his books, to be solvent and to move forward with some solidarity and structure in regards to their budget. Right now, we're in a state of flux, and that is very disconcerting to me. Councillor Freeson had indicated about, my comment to hers about the minority versus the majority. And I'm very empathetic to the minority. In fact, this is why I'm doing this. If we allow this to continue, and I've already indicated this. If we allow this to continue, and we don't have any other answer than to just use dividends that has already been pulled to where it's not sustainable, we could be in fact faced with a dilemma where we are still twelve million dollars in our operational budget. And it was already alluded that we're not allowed to run a deficit. So we have to balance this some way. So unless someone's got a better idea, I'm more than willing to listen. But if we look at a cer, situation where we would be ten or twelve million dollars short, that the dividends aren't, aren't, aren't repeatable, we can't get to that stage, I want to know who's picking up that tab? Who's being unable to submit and, and, and pass that bylaw, that tax bylaw that says, oh, by the way, we need ten million dollars? We're debating one million. So I'm, want to be held on the record that I am absolutely trying to protect by virtue of this enactment, the, the future of the taxpayer in terms of making right decisions at the right time.
Thank you councillor Samraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate councillor Turnbull's flexibility in trying to find a compromise solution to this in the short time that I've worked with him. He is unstoppable when it comes to ideas. Everybody wants to know what it's like to be a councillor. It involves hour-long conversations at ten o'clock at night from councillor Turnbull. Because I think, you know, the struggle that we're all having here is how best to distribute this burden there. And to councillor Hirsch's point about, I guess this is a tax, I guess my argument for straight property taxes on this is that it gives this council more flexibility on how to, it's another step on how to proportion some of that burden, whether it's to single family, multifamily, or non-res commercial there. I think that gives us a lot of movement on to incentivize other, other kinds of development as well. So I appreciate the, the amendment here. I still will not be supporting it.
Okay, councillor Dumanski.
Well, your worship, I appreciate there's a number of solutions being brought forward. I'm, I'm still struggling with it. I, I would like to, if I can, put Commissioner Mastal on the spot. So the, the plan that you put forward foresaw a two million dollar compounding per year and then at the end, two hundred thousand dollar impact. And after, I think twenty twenty-two, we were down to a four million dollar shortfall with the other different cuts and, and revenue sources and efficiencies we had to find and derive. What would a one-time one million dollar injection not compounded each year, not carried over at the end of twenty twenty-two? What kind of an impact roughly? My math is not good enough to, to discern that, but what would it roughly do? I, I, I'm suggesting, I think through my point, it's going to have a token impact at best. And then I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Mastal.
Through the chair to councillor Dumanski. I've been trying to run the numbers here. I assume the one million dollars would stay static for the remainder of, of the period.
It would. We wouldn't be adding to it, sorry.
I, I think the question you're getting at is we would require another seventeen million dollars from reserves over the remainder of that ten-year period to, to adjust for the reduction of the, the MCAF fee down to one million dollars.
So to the point that was made again by councillor Hirsch, I, I too want to be on the record, and I, I don't know if I've ever said that in all my time around here, because this is such a critical decision, in my opinion. And I'm not trying to be melodramatic. I, I really believe this is a pivotal opportunity for this council. That again, history will, will dictate one way or the other as moving us towards that solution. And I, I fundamentally believe it has to be an all or none. I, I will go on the record equally in saying that if it's not supported, then that's democracy. But I will equally notify you at this point, when that rate shock, tax increase of seven, eight, nine, ten percent comes before this, I will emphatically vote against it. And perhaps those who will not support this today will, will carry the weight on that burden to the taxpayer.
Councillor Turnbull?
Thank you. So I want to sort of clarify. So what I was actually trying to say is that I just want to find a balanced approach. So we want to start one year off at the one million dollars, not all, after that, we'll see where we stand at the, in twenty nineteen, a year from now. Are we in good shape? Are, is the commodity price is still good? Are they going up? What's the forecast? If we have to go to a full four and six million dollars per year MCAF, because that's the only way we can pay down our debt, then I would support that. I just say, why would we want to not look at, we're, we're going to fulfill our commitments for twenty nineteen for our budget, two million dollars, a million coming from MCAF and a million dollars from the utilities. And to councillor Turner's point, we are going to put thirty million dollars, in fact, thirty-two point eight, so thirty-one point eight million dollars into, back into reserves, half to heritage and half to stabilization fund. Following year, if we are, Mr. Lens can pull out his magic hat and, and give us another thirty million dollars in dividends, we will put another thirty million dollars back into our reserves. So I will tell you this, folks, I, I want to find a compromise. If, if you, if, if council chooses to not support that, I will not support either one or two of MCAF. I will, will not vote for it.
Councillor Turnbull, you and I are on the same page, and I absolutely applaud you on this amended motion. It's something that I could almost live with. However, I have reserved my comments on the original motion, and, and I, I just can't live with MCAF. So I, I won't even unfortunately support your amendment. So if any other questions or comments on the amendment? All right, if we could vote on the motion as amended? That is four in favor and five against. So we're back to the original motion, the two million dollars in MCAF. Any more questions or comments on the original recommendation from staff for adoption? No? So I have absolute respect for this, this council. This is, as you've heard, a very, very difficult decision. Right now, I see the other levels of government burdening the taxpayers at every single level, between the provincial and the federal government. I know that my taxes, even though I was supposed to affect the middle class to the positive, I know that my taxes are going up every single day. I'm paying more now than I've ever paid. The statement has been made that this is a difficult choice to raise taxes. I actually see as most levels of government and this level of government is raising taxes as the easy choice, the easy way out. I used to be in commissioned sales, and we used to, used to feel guilty about. I used to be in commission sales, and we used to feel guilty about making money off of selling somebody something, and then I had somebody come to me, you know, you've worked hard. Commission is not a dirty word. Dividends, in my view, are not a dirty word. Our taxpayers took a very large chance on our utility for 100 years with NGPR and petroleum, and they took a massive chance about two and a half, three years ago to borrow 66 million at the time, ended up being 55, on a new generation unit before we'd ever heard of legalization of marijuana or cryptocurrency or blockchain. And I believe our taxpayers, because they have taken a risk, do deserve a reward, a reward for their fruits, a reward for their taking a risk. I'm not completely against the MCAF, but I see it as the break-in case, the glass wall for the fire alarm. It's right there. It's always ready there that we can exercise it. It's very easy to do, but you don't break the glass until it's in case of emergency. And I do not see this as a, as we are in an emergency situation today. Counsel Turnbull alluded to it a little bit, that between 30 million this year, another 30 million next year, maybe another 30 million the year following. Aurora and Hot 8, we competed against the entire world to attract those two industries here. Why did they come here? Low utilities, low taxes. I believe that one of the best levers or levers, or however you want to say it, that we can pull is to grow the tax base, grow the assessment through our low utilities and through our low taxes. What better way than to offset this deficit than by growing the tax base? And that is just what we've done with Aurora and Hot 8. We were competing against Quebec Hydro. We barely beat them in my estimation, but it was because of the advantages here in Medicine Hat. The former CAO, who was actually a mentor to our present CAO, used to say, do not take a dime from the taxpayer until you absolutely have to. And I do not see us today. I recognize the financial horizon. I recognize the future. Other than, nobody, frankly, to be honest, has been sitting in the last, well, 10 and a half years, I've been here every single council meeting without missing. I have heard, I've seen four or five commissioners come and go in each of the divisions. I'm looking at my fourth or fifth CAO. I've seen council members come and go. Counsel Dumanowski is maybe the only one that's been here consistently with me in the last 10 years, and I have heard the doom and gloom from day one. 10 years ago, the end of days, things were ending, yet somehow the city has managed to pull through. And I do believe we'll be able to do that again. And so I actually am, and I have proven that I am willing to pull all the levers. I was one of the few that stood strong on the transit, and I am willing to pull all the levers. And I do think, sorry, and I'm going to toot my own horn, that I do think I have a pulse on this community, because I am out there every day, and I talk to all demographics, all economic spectrum from their poorest, and I do actually touch shoulders with our wealthiest. And I talk to them all every single day, and so I do believe I have a pulse on this community, second to none, frankly, because I'm outside of these four walls and talking to everybody. And I do believe that you will have to stare down these taxpayers when you say you've got a $30 million dividend and another $30 million dividend, and you raised my taxes. Explain to me why you did that. And so I will not be doing that. And so, as I've been here this amount of time, my legacy and our legacy will not be a new tax, and a tax that we're going to talk about repealing. We all know that this tax will never be repealed. It will go to the base, and just like probably even the carbon tax we're discussing at dinner tonight. Yeah, okay, the next governor wants to get rid of the carbon tax, well, what are they going to do to offset it? So I implore this council, we can wait out another year, we can see, as Counsel Turnbull was actually alluding to, to see what it's like a year from now, see what the economic state is. And so, right now, I know where the vote is going, and Counsel Friesen, this, I implore you, okay? Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote on the motion? Yeah, that's, and the motion fails. Five against, four in favor.
Okay, so item number two, as Counsel Samraj alluded to, that, okay, well, so if you don't have, you don't employ a damn CAF, what do you do? And so maybe we want to have some discussion on that, but I think, well, Counsel Samraj, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd like to amend motion number two to, that council considers to fully offset the loss of annual energy contributions through increased property taxes.
So is your motion just basically to replace the proposed MCAF as going forward? So it would be the 2 million first, four, so like a two, and I'm just, this is just random, but a $2 million shortage is about a 3% property tax.
That's right.
So 3, 3, 3, and then, okay, so that's your motion?
That's right. It's option number two in the briefing note.
Right. Going to get a seconder on the, so the amendment to the financially fit assumptions?
I'll second it.
Okay, Counsel, okay, Counsel Turnbull, no?
Oh, I was just going to second.
Oh, you're going to second it, okay.
Yeah, I think it should come to a vote.
Okay, any questions or comments on an incremental property tax increase to match the loss of the MCAF? Counsel Samraj?
I appreciate the mayor's comments on MCAF during the previous motion. While I was against MCAF, I do not agree that we can put this off for any longer. I, you know, the question about when to go to the taxpayer is an interesting one. Do we wait until the absolute minute when all of our reserves are gone? I think that's a much more dangerous position to be in, because then it leaves us no wiggle room in the event of any other unforeseen emergency that does come up. Yes, 7% a year sounds like a lot, and it is a lot. It is a lot that we are asking for. It comes up, I mean, for the average citizen, it'll probably be about $150 more on your tax, on your tax bill a year. It's a lot, but these are serious times, I think, and I think I like the spotlight fully on, fully on us that we are asking this, and I think that's just a very clear way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Turnbull.
Thank you, worship. Well, my young friend here, superstar, I call him, certainly has courage, he has integrity, and he said what he feels is his view of how we should pay our way out of this. I'll still come back to the same situation. I would support that for one year, but that's all I would support it for. I want to know where we're going to be a year from now or two years from now. And anybody who says that they can make a budget over four to five years in today's world, I'm sorry, I just don't buy it. We just, there's so many variables of where we're going to be down the road. So I do appreciate Chris's passion, and he's so articulate, I wish I could speak as well as he does, but he has to kick me the odd times to help me. So I would only support that, Counsel Samraj, for one year. Again, I want the balance.
Well, so you unfortunately, if you want to amend his motion? Or are you just not going to support it?
No, I'm not going to support it.
Okay.
Unless he wants to amend it.
You can't.
You want to amend it?
No, he can't.
Your worship, I move a friendly amendment to the amendment, or the motion that Counselor Samraj made, instead of a three-year continuous 7% increase.
It's only three-ish.
So understanding, I think it's important for the taxpayer to understand that we are currently looking at a 4% increase year over year, with the understanding that this is going to be an additional 3%. But my motion is that in this next year, and this year only, to go to 4 plus 3 with a hard look at our financials in the year to come. And as Chair of Audit, I will ensure that we will continue to do a financial review. I reinstate and reiterate my concerns of where we're headed. I am willing to make a compromise in order for this to conclude and therefore make the friendly amendment.
I don't know if that's a friendly amendment. You're just actually making amendment, so. Do you have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, so the amended, the amendment of the amended motion is that we do a 4 plus 3 property tax increase for one year and commit to looking at it subsequent years in this term. Yes? Yeah, okay. Any comments on that? Counsel McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. As much as I felt the MCAF was the ideal solution moving forward this evening, my main goal was to move us further away from relying on the dividend, and I agree with Mr. Samraj that this does fill that void, so I will be supporting this one-year look at increasing the property taxes.
Okay. Counsel Hirsch?
Sorry, I'm full.
Okay. Counsel Turner?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I have to say, I cannot support this. I think one thing we have to look at is our business community, our job creators. They're already being hit with higher minimum wages, carbon taxes, and now we're going to hit them with a 7% increase in their, in their property taxes? You know, you talked about growth in the community. There's a way to kill growth by taxing your job creators, so I absolutely cannot support this.
Counsel Samraj?
There's no need that 7% tax increases has to go directly to our, to our business community here. Council has the discretion and flexibility to distribute that burden as we see fit. I think, I think that's a very important distinction to know here.
Counsel Turner?
So further to that, I don't want, as a council, to be able to be in a position to pick winners and losers in our community when it comes to taxes. We have to have a fair distribution across the taxes, so we're going to say, we're going to increase residential by 7%, but we're not going to increase business taxes. We can't do that.
Counsel, okay, go ahead.
If I may respond to that, Counsel Turner, I mean, our, that is what city council does. I mean, we decide all sorts of ways about which, the way this community is going to develop, I mean, which things we're going to focus on, which things we're not. I guess I disagree with that characterization of what we, what we do here.
Yeah, okay. Counsel Dumanowski?
Shifting the tax burden from the business community to the residential would be disproportionately made up through a higher, it would be a 10% markup for your residents to make up a small margin of savings or reduction on your business side. Even more difficult for me to support. I cannot support this, I said it earlier. This isn't sour, you know, face. Counsel Dumanowski's sitting here saying he didn't get his way, so he can't support. I could never endorse that. We had a plan that was well thought out by staff, by the community, and it's not being endorsed. I would rather us have to face the beast, face on a future point sadly, than to transfer that burden over in the form of a pure tax increase to the people. And I will, will comment and end by saying this is one of the darkest council meetings I've ever had to sit through in my time around here.
Counsel Samraj?
Let's get some perspective here. Yes, it is very serious, but the combined utility tax rates, even under this amendment that's being proposed here, will bring us in line to leverage levels after three or four years. So, I mean, I think, for sure, I mean, none of us take this lightly, but let's have some perspective about what, what this is here.
Okay, so we're on the amended amendment, and Counsel Turnbull, I'm going to want to call a vote on it pretty soon. So go ahead.
Yes, I get that. We had an opportunity to pass MCAF. All right, we had an opportunity to do it, to wait one year before we put in the full extent of the 4, 6 million and 6.2 million down the road. This council chose not to have that amendment, and now we have no MCAF, and now you have to find the money somewhere. So Counsel Dumanowski, I respect you a lot, but all you had to do was give that much for one year, and you would have had your MCAF and your solution, because my proposal was that we would meet the 2019 financially fit number. After that, who knows where you go. So will we put MCAF in next year? I guess we'll have to wait and see what happens.
Okay, so let's vote on the amended amendment to raise property taxes 7% in the first year. All in favor? Oh, that passed. Okay. So, no, yeah, okay, so now, as I hope, okay. Did everybody know what they were voting on? Okay. Okay, so now we go back to the original motion as amended, and that was, is basically to do a 4 and a 3% property tax increase for one year, for one year. So any other questions or comments on that? So it's the original motion as amended, which has just passed. Sorry, I just, so.
So your, the, it's one year?
Yes.
To refute, one year from now? And so we have to vote on the original motion as amended now? Yeah, CEO?
Yeah, I thought that's right.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I just want to be really sure that as staff, we understand what direction we've been given. Council has endorsed a four-year budget, not a one-year budget.
Correct.
And we have asked for assumptions to be put behind a four-year budget. If you are rescinding that and asking us to do one year at the time, you need to rescind that decision, because that was a decision and direction already given.
I get it.
So if we only get assumptions that are valid for one year, I'm not sure how we're going to prepare a four-year budget.
You're going to have to move forward anyway, I'm sorry, and we're going to revisit a year by year if this passes. This is just one piece of your budget. I recognize it's 2 million to 4 million dollars. Okay, so the original, I'm sorry, original motion as amended?
One more.
Okay, yeah.
So in lieu of the fact that this became a full-fledged debate, which I appreciate the public being involved in, I think the level of transparency is crystal clear tonight. But I humbly suggest that I submit a tabling motion here to reflect with the comments that COA Haglund did. I think, to be honest, we owe it to the citizens of Medicine Hat to have some reflection on this, to understand the ramifications of every decision we make, and quite frankly, we're down, going down a road where it's been enlightening in terms of a four-year planning, we're doing one year at a time. So with that, I humbly suggest we do a tabling motion to a specific time of next council meeting in order to bring this back on the agenda.
I'll second that.
I think I can. So table the motion, there's no debate. Table this for two weeks, two weeks to the next council meeting. Call in the question. If we could call the question, run the tabling motion. It was unanimous. All right, here we go again. We are now on items three and four, for information. Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, next, under reports for reception, we have item 7.1, the draft minutes of the Medicine Hat Police Commission of May 17, 2018, and police, police chief report on page 190 of your packet.
I'll move the report for reception.
Second. Questions, comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, we have item 7.2, Municipal Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May 23, 2018, on page 207 of your packet.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Questions, comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, under bylaws for second and third reading, we have item 8.1, Bylaw 4481, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw 4438, the Safety Codes Permit Bylaw, on page 213 of your packet.
Worship, I said Bylaw 4481, be read a second time.
Second that.
If we, any questions or comments on second reading? If we could vote?
Can we not do this as a one motion?
No, no, unfortunately. I know, we're all getting tired, but you do have to vote. That was unanimous, thank you. I said Bylaw 4481, be read a third time, it passed.
Second.
Questions or comments? If we could vote?
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, item eight point two is Bylaw four four eight two, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw two three zero zero, the amusement arcade and billiard room bylaw, page two twenty-four of your packet.
I said Bylaw four four eight two, be read a second time.
Second that.
Questions or comments? If we could call the vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
I said Bylaw four four eight two, be read a third time, it passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, we have Bylaw eight point three, Bylaw four four eight three, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw two three three nine, the licensing bylaw, on page two twenty-six of your packet.
I said Bylaw four four eight three, be read a second time.
Second that motion.
Questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I said Bylaw four four eight three, be read a third time, it passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, Bylaw eight point four is Bylaw four four eight four, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw two six four eight, the taxi bylaw, on page two thirty-three of your packet.
I said Bylaw four four eight four, be read a second time.
Second.
Questions? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I said Bylaw four four eight four, be read a third time, it passed.
Second.
Questions, comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item eight point five is Bylaw four four eight five, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw three four seven two, the escort services bylaw, on page two thirty-five of your packet.
I said Bylaw four four eight five, be read a second time.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I said Bylaw four four eight five, be read a third time, it passed.
Second.
Any questions, comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Item eight point six is Bylaw four four nine two, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to establish a code of conduct for members of council, on page two thirty-seven of your packet.
Your Worship, I move to introduce Bylaw number four four nine two, and have it read a second time.
Second.
Questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
And Your Worship, I, Your Worship, I leave to introduce Bylaw number four four nine two, and have it read a third time, it passed.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Under our new bylaw section, item nine point one is Bylaw four four eight seven, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw four one six eight, the land use bylaw, on page two forty-five of your packet.
I move for leave to introduce Bylaw number four four eight seven, and that, the bylaw be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item nine point two, Bylaw four four nine zero, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw three zero three one, fees for tax certificates, information and services provided by the city's finance department, page two sixty-one of your packet.
Sorry, Your Worship, are we on nine point two?
Yes.
I asked that Bylaw four four nine zero be read, or be introduced for first reading?
Second that.
Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item nine point three is Bylaw four four nine one, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw three two two four, the dishonored payment fee bylaw, on page two sixty-three of your packet.
I said Bylaw four four nine one, be given first reading?
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, we move to new business, item eleven point one, resolution regarding subdivision fees. This is for adoption, and I will read the resolution into the record. So, whereas section fifteen of Bylaw three zero zero eight, the subdivision and development authorities bylaw provides that council may by resolution establish fees to be charged with respect to subdivisions in the city, and whereas council considers it advisable to amend the existing fees, now therefore the municipal corporation of the City of Medicine Hat in council assembled resolves as follows. One, the fees set out in Schedule A to this resolution are hereby established. Two, this resolution takes effect on January first, twenty nineteen, and the Schedule A is in the packet.
Okay, I get a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item eleven point two is another resolution regarding development services and encroachment fees for adoption, on page two sixty-six of your packet, and I will read this into the record. Whereas section eleven point six of Bylaw four one six eight, the City of Medicine Hat Land Use Bylaw, provides that council may from time to time establish by resolution such fees as are required for the proposed purpose of this bylaw, and whereas council considers it advisable to amend the fees established pursuant to Bylaw four one six eight, and fees established for various other land use planning and encroachment matters. Now therefore, the municipal corporation of the City of Medicine Hat in council assembled resolves as follows. One, the fees set out in Schedule A to this resolution are hereby established. Two, this resolution takes effect on January first, twenty nineteen, and this schedule is also in the council packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we're adjourned.